Eddie?
Yeah.
You are, you are.
Okay.
Justin, you're ready? Good morning, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, September 1st. Our first item of agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have approval minutes. We have minutes from July 8th and July 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes noting that they are over 45 days, and I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Public comments and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. You just wait, I know. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Public comments?
Yes.
Yes?
I'd like to take the- You need to come up here with all- Keep my name and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Linda White, Chairperson for Love Lock Frontier Day, and I just want to thank everybody. It was a very successful year, even though we started late. But we had a really good turnout. Saturday was awesome. And the fun zone for the kids, it was over tremendously, so it was really a good day. And just want to thank everybody and looking forward to next year, August 5th and through the 8th. And hopefully we'll have another real good turnout. And nothing will stop us this year. Keep our fingers crossed. Anyway, just wanted to say thank you. The committee did thank you. I have a terrific committee. They made me look really, really good. You know, select the right people and they get the job done. So I'm going to hand them all the the kudos and pats on the back and everything because they all worked really, really hard.
You guys did a great job. It was really good.
Yep, yes, they did. They were terrific.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And all of you.
Alright, thank you.
Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom with comments? Justin? Hearing none or saying none. Item number three, review of all agenda items to determine if they do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I have a question. Would 11E fall into that?
No, not a rule.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that there's no effect. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Road Department.
Good morning. Ah, so two weeks went by fast again. We finished patching Coal Canyon for now. We had to, Cor asked us to do some work up there, so we headed up there. Patched a stretch of road that's been always been being repaired. Hopefully this holds it up, but anyhow they paid it, so they paid for some hot mix. Took about three days and we got that done. They were very happy, appreciative, did some other work up there as well. We also ended, went to clean out a cow guard on the trap club road. It should have been about an hour job. It turned into two days. I had to had to replace the whole thing. It was completely rotted out, so that hope to get some other stuff done with that, put a shank high on that. Anyhow, got that done and then we are just cruise out at Gulf Coast towards the Basko Ranch. They've been hauling hay out there and there's a stretch of road that's not improved and it blew out bad. I think Jerry said they fixed 54 holes in the last three days, so now we're gonna gravel that road. Baskos are giving us water, so we appreciate that. Clerc Ridge Ranch is working with us as well. Can't do that stuff out there without water, so that works out pretty good.
Is the one we talked about at Sonoma Ranch, is that from the hay trucks, just the weight and stuff?
Yeah.
Is this getting?
Yeah. They, they rust, it'll be old as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's pretty much all I have. So Road Department, it doesn't sound like a lot.
So I haven't heard anything from Emily on the mosquitoes. Are we still foggy or is everything okay now?
No, I think Jerry called it quits. I think a couple of weeks ago. I'm sorry, I didn't record that.
No, no, that's okay. So I'm guessing then that-
I think they're at bay right now.
Good. Well, it's cold at night, so.
No water, very dry.
I just was wondering.
Yeah. Couple of weeks ago, I think I'm going to quit, quit for a while and I said, okay, you know, there weren't any schemes.
Well, thank him for doing that.
Of course.
Linda, anybody else on Road Department?
So landfill, don't have a lot. That's having to go clean the transfer sites. Well, outside out of mine, we've been busy. But they're not too bad. The guys checked on them, so they're not too bad, but we'll get up there probably next week, have to clean them up. Steven buried that fire debris up there. He was thinking it was going to be a big bad job and only took him about three quarters of a day, so that's taking care of it. He buried a lot of mattresses with it. Slivered on too. I don't know if you guys been out there with the place that's pretty good.
Have the, like motel debris that go in same hole, same place?
I don't know what, you know, I've still not even discussed that with Steven. I don't know where he's-
Oh, imagine for long, same.
I don't know. I keep forgetting to ask. Anyhow, I was going to report about, all the guys were up there, my mechanics. I guess it was last Thursday and, you know, we had fixed that fence all the way around. They were tore down, was driving in. Well, Jeff says, hey, did you know they're driving it up on top now? I says, no. So they had a trail. They cut the fence up there, was driving through there. So I seen a perfect opportunity to put a trail camera in a motorhome up there, right where they're driving in and they came back already. I was up there Friday for a couple of hours battling that thing I got to put in and sure enough, it paid dividends, so what? They stole some stuff out of the, we're not too sure of all they stole so far, but they were stealing gas. They left some evidence to that. Anyhow, we got pictures of them coming and going. I think we're going to have license plates, so let's maybe very happy this morning.
Good.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's go after them.
Yeah, we're working on this. And that's pretty much all I have.
So are you still a full crew and every?
You know, we are careful. We've, we've had a little hell in last week or so. We had a couple off sick. Kevin's had a family emergency, so he's not there. Got a, Galen's a one man crew today from Love Lock. Galen and Jerry and Robert up North looking. Bill had to take the day off. And Jacob is not feeling today. And we, we're at full strength when we're, when we're all really well, so yeah. Limping along here. We'll hopefully get going here and see bigger projects in the future, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Things are going pretty good.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're good?
I think so.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna jump, we're gonna jump to item number seven, which is proclamation and awards. That's since Mr. Hill. Forty-five years?
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you for demonstrating the continued commitment of excellence and success. Amazing. And there's a venue, you can do more of that.
Okay.
So we have another one from Maria Olivas.
Yeah. She's one of our students. Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, so that's amazing.
Then we have Rosario. Five years of service. Does it seem like five years?
It does.
It's in like 10 years, right? Thank you for demonstrating the continued commitment of excellence and success. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Smile. You're on candid camera.
Okay, that brings us to Senior Center. Update on number of congregant homebound meals that's, has stayed the same. Senior Center serves anywhere from 21 to 25 per day on the homebound. We actually I better not, we, we lost one over the weekend.
Lost what position?
Pardon me?
Oh, a homebound person, you mean? Oh, sorry. I didn't understand.
Yeah, we, we got to call Monday morning. Anyway, nice little old lady. We've hired the second cook, so we have two cooks. The second cook comes on board next Tuesday. So we're getting, we're, we're coming back.
So who did you hire for the cooks?
Her name is Kelly Brenham.
She the head cook or?
We're not doing head cook.
Okay.
We just have two cooks.
Okay, I just missed-
Some, someday may, one of them may work up to that.
And who's the other person?
Her name is Candace Johnson. She's actually been there a couple of weeks. So do we go from there?
Do we have a, any applicants for director?
We have one.
One?
Yes.
Okay. That's promising.
I think so.
And then do we have a homebound driver? I'm guessing not, or?
We do not at this time, not right now. It's myself and Janice Rutherford spells me a couple of days a week.
Or do you-
That job is out there.
Do we have job openings for those?
They're, they're posted. They're out there.
The bus driver and?
Not the bus driver, but I mean, because I'm not going to put a bus driver out there until we know, there's no need yet. The homebound and admin person, there is a need today, so we'll see what, see what we get. I actually had a call yesterday, so we'll have at least one now. Billings and grounds.
Good morning. How are you? Spooky. Well, my guys have been out very diligently working on weeds everywhere. Cleaning up cemeteries, getting them ready for this coming holiday. And they've been working on wind of a lot, petting zoo and the property next to it. I'm the sheriff's office.
Yes.
One of the things I want to talk to the commissioners about is we are having another influx of people wanting to metal detecting our parks.
Influx, meaning how many?
Uh, there's been several.
Okay, I know of one.
Yeah. Problem is, when they're doing it, they're destroying our grasses and stuff out here and they're digging up and in this park, there's a lot of old abandoned metal lines that they're digging up to, but there's nothing here for them to find. There needs to be something because it's doing an unsafe thing when some of the divots and stuff are being left out and on compacting dirt. Making hazards.
So metal detecting?
Yeah.
I missed that part. It took me a bit to catch up, but someone had told me that you couldn't do metal detecting in the city. I, and I don't know if that's true. I just heard.
That's not true.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's ordinances or NRSs saying we can't do it at state parks and stuff like that, but there's nothing in reference to the county departments every time.
So that's something that we could address and put in place, but we'd have to put it on the agenda if we wanted to do that.
It's just, it's, it's more, it's a nuisance and it's a safety thing I'm more concerned with because there's, so there's a lot of abandoned stuff out there that we're unaware of, whether it be electrical or water lines or something like that, that if they're digging up, that could cause havoc to this building or other things. But I would like to have that addressed at some point. Secondly, we're having a big influx of vandalism again.
Really?
Yeah.
In this park? Oh, it's somebody, the gazebo or something?
Yeah, they broke several pieces of what else. We have fixed it already, but it's a big influx of that. And then we're having people jump behind the library and do damage behind there too. I have cameras back there and I do have video of a good portion of that.
Pictures, good enough that you can identify?
Well, yes and no. Problem I'm having is it's not the, it's the equipment that we have. It's been, it's, that sends the transmissions is all getting older. It's all five years old. We're better. So I'm going to start replacing some of that to make it better, so we have better video. But I do have video of people actually doing this stuff out there. But it's becoming a bigger issue again. And it's not a, a certain age. It's from three to four years old, all the way to like teenagers.
So I, I guess it wasn't clear. Can you identify who it is?
I'm, I'm hoping that, I've, I've spoke to the chief of police.
Okay.
Um, he believes he can go over to the school and speak to them and pull these children aside and start addressing that. But yeah, it's, it's a sad thing when that starts happening again.
Yeah.
Other than that, life has just been going as it's going.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions?
Did you want to, the keys for the, for the court? Did you want to say anything about that?
No, but I do want to bring up that, did you think of something? Masks?
Yeah, I have that down too.
Um, we've been in the pandemic now for over a year.
You've been what?
We've been dealing with the pandemic stuff for over a year. And at this, at this point, I believe all of our employees, or at least most, majority of them should all have their masks. Whether there's something that the county suppliers have supplied their own. I need to know if the commissioners would still like me purchasing masks for, for that, for the public and or employees.
Well, I know that we have on our agenda to talk about so once we make a decision about masks, then we can talk about that too. We do have some, and then the American Rescue Plan would have money in it that you would be able to purchase masks if that were decided. Also Sean has those face shields. I don't know if you've seen them and, you know, when they go around your head and they shield, he has two cases of those, so if anybody wants any of those, we can provide those.
I have one. When I use my grinder in my shop.
I don't know, I wouldn't keep everything else out, but.
But, okay. Alright, so we'll talk about masks when we get later down the road here.
And then I have questions in regards to keys to specific offices in this courthouse that have changed their locks years ago. They went to electronic-
They went to what?
Electronic keys, district court and justice court. Well, now they've changed them again. And this is, and now the county was never involved with that, that aspect, that they were done through district court and justice court. They had monies or something like that. But then we're having issues with some of those locks. And they're looking to need to maintain those and I don't know. It wasn't something that we were involved with.
What are they looking for you to do and so?
Help maintain them.
Oh, maintain them.
You know, I, I don't know.
Because prior to this, you know, before they changed it, we had all the keys that worked.
Yeah.
But now half, half this courthouse is under different locks.
As you know, we did rekey the, the senior center and, and to detect, you have, you still have your keys.
Yes.
We did that because of changeover personnel.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, that's just a few things I want to address.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, but I'm going to hang out and listen to some of these other things.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Library. No. Fire and ambulance. When I came in this morning, they were responding with three engines, the tender. I didn't say any fire, but they were responding to something out there. So probably that's the reason why they're not here. What's that?
I think Sean Burke.
Oh, okay. Sean, you on there?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Love Lock Fire is out on a, yeah, they're out on the downed power line.
Yeah, we did have a power bump this morning and, and I could see where it was when I jay over the old man.
Yeah. Yeah, so for Grass Valley, nothing really significant to report, just still waiting to hear about opportunities for a brush truck. And that's really it. Other than that, membership's good. Call volume has been moderate, mostly medical calls. We are seeing a significant increase in COVID cases where we're picking up people and Humboldt is transporting them with respiratory problems, and that's about it for Grass Valley.
So you have other reports, Sean?
I, I really don't. I guess I could speak about the Grass Valley Advisory Board. So we did have a really good meeting on Monday with Senator, State Senator and State Assemblywoman Hanson came out. Very large crowd. We had 35 plus people out there from the community, both Pershing and Humboldt County. So that was, that was a great event and I definitely appreciate your attendance there, Commissioner, as well as Commissioner Schenk coming out and helping us to set up that meeting. So good, good thing for the community there. From the emergency management perspective, really you know, the, we're getting additional guidance coming out from the state regarding masks. I see that's on the agenda later in the day, so probably just wait for that. But definitely going to have to make some decisions on, on how to handle that. And yeah, nothing really else to report.
Okay, thank you. Community center. We don't have any other fire departments here. You don't have any aligned or? Okay. Community center. Update on matters related to the community center.
After I talked to Jocelyn last week, other than a few hiccups, everything's going well. And I think it's just mostly the allowing people in early to set up. Hopefully it's all worked out. I am going to request that she either come in person or submit her report or on meeting dates.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, no cooperative extension? That brings us up to Justin.
It's the technology. So over the last couple, it's pretty much my standard report over the last couple of weeks, I've been extremely busy. We, as part of our network upgrades, a technician from our consultancy for systems came out and helped me mount wireless access, finished mounting all the wireless access points for the sheriff's office, for the courthouse. So now I've just got to figure out why they're not powering on like they're supposed to. Been working on sorting out the new remote access for the sheriff mobile units. So that they have, they have an easier time connecting back to the main office when they're out on patrol or out at an event like Burnley Gate, man, which they're gearing up, I know they're gearing up for. Moving, moving forward slowly on the planning for the phone system. We'll have information for everyone who's involved on our side for that soon. And if there's anything that anyone has that they need changed or added, they need to talk to me by the end of the week. That's, that's probably when I'm going to have all that information ready for the phone company to take and start programming the phones.
So we're going to have new phones throughout here soon?
Yes, all over, all over county facilities.
And then FCC, the equipment is again, the phones and everything?
I believe, I believe they have all the equipment at this point.
So they're just waiting on what you have to provide for them or?
Right.
Okay.
So yeah, the, the next, the next step is going to be setting up, well, the next step is programming devices and starting the porting requests for the public telephone numbers for all the offices. So I'm, I'm trying to get that done this week so that we can move forward on that. I've also been working with NIS to get our- In NIS to get our. The, the internet connectivity that we had set up to tie us over until. AT&amp;T gets set up. Uh, we've got the new radios on the roofs of the courthouse, the admin building, the annex building, and on the tower at the sheriff's office. Um, they let me know this morning that they, uh, they finished their testing and everything looks nice and stable and solid. To team those facilities. So we'll be working on turning that up. For internet access very soon as well. Um, if you have, if you have a couple more on me or hidden somewhere, that would be great, because that's, that's another. Time intensive project. Yeah, just, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of, um. Support items, our, our network is definitely showing its age. There, there are, um, there are starting to be. Issues with accessing network resources. It's not, it's not, and it's, it's not the, the network itself, it's the resource.
Yes.
That, the storage servers, the older servers in our, so. Well. We'll, we'll, we'll really need to, um, discuss. How. We're gonna have to, at some point, discuss how we're going to, um. Replace all that equipment. Not from, not from a technical standpoint, the technical part is actually pretty easy, just takes time. Um, but, you know.
Oh, we're gonna pay for it?
Pay for it, uh, we, we need to house it better. Um, stuff like that.
And you were, did you ever find out about IP address? Cause I think you wanted to. Purchase our own. I'm not sure the terminology is.
Oh, uh, yeah, buying a block of addresses from Aaron, which is the, the. Uh, agency that oversees public addressing for the United States. I've, I've talked with both NIS and AT&amp;T and. Um, apparently I was mistaken. I thought they had said, I thought the ATT said we were gonna have to get our own. That is apparently not the case.
Okay.
To provide us with public IP addresses. Which makes it much simpler.
Okay.
Then they, they're the ones who have to deal with Aaron and getting your addresses announced to the world. I don't have.
Okay, good. Want something to be easier for you?
We have a nine o'clock call-in meeting, so. And I know you have to do your magic over this.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Are you able to hear me all right?
Good morning, Mark.
Yes, we can hear you. Great.
Excellent. Thank you. At first and foremost, I, I wanna thank you for your time. Um, I guess I should, uh, let me back up one step. Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Mark Valashin. I'm the Deputy Secretary of State for Elections, for the record. Uh, I'm here today on behalf of Secretary of State Barbara Sigaski, in order to discuss the plan for our voter outreach campaign and to ask for your assistance. Uh, in close coordination with your clerk, and in addition to her local voter outreach campaign. I intend to spend significant portions of the next eighteen to twenty-four months, providing facts to groups of current or future voters. Among the many lessons learned from the twenty twenty election cycle. We identified the very clear need to spend more time talking with voters about how our elections are conducted and administered at the state and local level. The specific procedural and technical details, something that had honestly not previously been of interest to many voters. Are now being discussed at dinner tables, association meetings, and on social media across the state. Unfortunately, many of those discussions include everything from deliberate falsehoods to simple misunderstandings. About the federal and state laws to which we maintain strict compliance. That alone has led to significant confusion. But adding to this confusion, the twenty twenty-one legislative session created a number of changes to how our elections will be conducted during future election cycles. These changes include different timelines for ballot submission and signature curing, new options for specific classifications of voters. And others that will further complicate voter understanding of an already complex process. While I have an acute understanding of our state's election laws, I do not have as keen an awareness of your constituents, their concerns and questions. Or how to best contact them. Therefore, in order to maximize the effectiveness of this voter outreach campaign. I ask that through your county clerk, you direct me towards those advocacy groups, community leaders, and others who could benefit from a discussion about our elections. The conversations could be in person when possible, or via Zoom, and there's no limit to how many we can schedule or a deadline by which we must be complete. Of course, I'll try to talk to as many people as possible before the twenty twenty-two general election on November eighth next year. But I recognize that these conversations will need to continue well into twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Of note, I will ask us to schedule a similar meeting such as this with our statewide elected officials, your county school board, and many other boards and advocacy groups across the state as well. I would also like to schedule an in-person meeting with this board so that I'm able to discuss these same items with you and can answer any questions that you may have. Our electoral process is intricate, but our voters deserve to hear from a trusted source about how it works, what your clerk and her staff do. And why I am firm in my belief that our process is secure. With that being said, I'm available for your questions.
Questions, anybody?
Um, Mark, this is Carol Shank. I didn't know exactly what your presentation was gonna be. I, I thought you were gonna talk a little bit more about what's in place to prevent voter fraud and, and voter problems. So, is it, am I understanding that that will be something in the future that you will be doing?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, excellent question, and, and I appreciate that. Um. So we, I guess there's really kind of two ways that we could do it. I, I certainly can provide some answers now if you have questions. Um, but I, I was planning, I, I would rather talk to you in person about it, uh, and schedule at a time at a future date where. Uh, you know, in conjunction with Lacy, we could talk, uh, you know, about, again, not all, only the improvements that we've made and the continuing. Uh, our, our efforts to even further secure the election, uh, but also, uh, again, maybe provide additional details and the like. However you prefer.
That's fine. I would prefer in person as well. Um, I just wasn't sure exactly what was gonna happen today. So you'll work with, with our clerk, Lacy Donaldson, to arrange something so that we can have you here in person then, correct?
Absolutely. I, I tremendously appreciate that. In addition, uh, you know, again, if there's. Uh, you know, individuals in a county or, or community leaders, folks that maybe you've heard complaints or concerns from. Um, uh, again, I'm eager and, and more than willing to set up individual meetings with them. Uh, again, we could either set it up so that it's in conjunction, the same time when I come out in person to talk to you. Um, or if they would rather, again, even, even in smaller groups, um. Honestly, even down to one-on-one, I have no issue setting up a phone call or, you know, something similar as this. Um, so that I can, I can talk to folks and explain all the things that we're doing and have done, uh, and to address their questions.
The idea of having a, an in-person visit from you would be a, a good thing to get, get into. Lacy, do you have any questions?
I think that, um, when he does come out, that we should allow our community to know in case they have questions.
We could do it at the community center, have an actual larger, um, event so people are aware. And I have a question, Mark. How do you say your last name? Say it slow, please.
Yes, ma'am. I, I have found that it's easier to say if you're not looking at it, uh, for what it's worth.
Okay.
But it said Velashin.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Uh, thank you all. I, I appreciate your time today, and I look forward to our continuing, uh, correspondence. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Justin, you're back up.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea at the community center and our local. Oh, there's a whole, yeah, there's a whole bunch of people. You're okay, Justin. Take a deep breath. You don't wanna be Mark from the deputy. No.
So yeah, it's, it's pretty much my department report. I'm very much looking forward. I think, I think the two o'clock item where we're talking about future workshops.
Yes.
And looking forward to that.
I have a list too, and I know you're, you're on the list. So. You have two items, and the one, can you explain the J four, what you need?
So.
I, I think I understand, but just if you wouldn't mind.
So, um. Basically, basically switching internet providers, it's a big deal. Um, and we're, we're, we're not just, we're not just changing the tires on the truck as it goes hurtling down the mountain. We're rebuilding the truck from tires up. So, um.
And probably the road on the mountain too.
Little bit, little bit, um. So, what I have, what I, what I've requested, uh, from J four on the, the proposal. Is for their assistance in, um, reconfiguring our firewalls, which are our perimeter devices. So that, um. They use the new network. Network map, so, so, um, instead of, so right, right now. The three internet connections in the courthouse. One internet connection in the admin building, one in the annex building, and the one in the sheriff's office. All go straight out to the internet. The new, the, the new network design is that the admin building, the courthouse, and the annex building. All meet together at the sheriff's office, and then from there, all four buildings go up to the internet. Once we have all the networking in place with either AT&amp;T or with NIS. We need to reconfigure our perimeter. Packet pots, the firewalls. To go, okay, instead of, instead of sending traffic out to the internet. You're gonna send them down this new road we built to the sheriff's office, and then that traffic cop will direct them out to the internet. So that's basically what the proposal from J four is. We'll need to do it whether, whatever the decision on the AT&amp;T project is. Um, we'll need to do this. It just depends, the AT&amp;T project that just. Um. Means the difference of doing it now or later. But it has, it has to be done. When we switch internet providers completely, for the new path.
So what J four will do, it'll work with whatever we're gonna do with AT&amp;T. And working in conjunction with them, so that what, if we were to. Well, the AT&amp;T project, yeah, but with Danny and all that stuff, and so we won't be doing it twice.
That is, that, um, that's why I asked, I asked to hold off the last meeting on the J four proposal. Is because I don't wanna do this twice.
Right, and we don't wanna pay for it twice.
Exactly.
All right, so I think that's a good thing, cause I don't expect you to do all of this.
I can't.
No, you can't.
It's, it's the simple, the simple fact of the matter, there, there is too much work in IT for one person, but that's. That's a whole separate topic.
And then how does that correlate with like the phone system too and everything? It doesn't have anything to do with what the phone system?
Well, new internet is.
New internet, yeah.
We, we have to, we have to get better internet to support our new. Phone system, which basically uses the internet instead of traditional telephone service to make phone calls.
Okay, so there's no conflict with that?
No, no. In fact, we need this to make the phone work.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just not.
Right, you have to have that in there.
Right, there, um. I suspect, so on the phone project, we have the little, the little, the box, the Starbucks's. As part of it, those are, those are mainly meant as a redundant connection, so if our internet went out, we'd still be able to make phone calls using. The cellular network. So I think we might need for a time, be able to leverage those, if, if they, if the timing just lines up that. We're not quite ready one way, we can kind of supplement with those Starbucks's. But that's definitely not their primary function. You don't wanna leave them that way.
So where?
So we have a price of fourteen thousand one hundred dollars. For the J four.
No, there, there were two proposals. I don't, I don't know if you have both of them in front of you. The one was for time and materials. Which they estimated, they estimated. Lower on the time and materials, with the understanding that it could go over. Could, that means more than, yes. They, they bill us for. Uh, they bill us for any time.
So is the billing two ways, either time and materials if it's less, but it won't be any more than the fourteen one?
They're right, well, um, the fourteen one came from the fixed cost proposal. So with the fixed costs, it's, it's fourteen one, period. It, um, doesn't go over there. Um, so they kind of estimated, so they, they, for the fixed cost, they estimated. Their best guess what it maximum could be.
Maximum what?
The, what, what it would, what the maximum might. Um, the time and materials. They, they estimated that closer to what they feel the actual time would be. With the understanding that it could be.
So I guess my question is, so then we have to decide which proposal? Okay.
You wanna, you wanna go with the fixed cost rooms?
And then where are we getting the money?
That's my next question. Is that in your budget?
Budget for the capital improvements? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't have all money.
So is, is there money in the ad valorem that you're?
There is, but we moved all of the software from the building fund to ad more, so. I think it'll fit in ad more, but again, we gotta watch that for.
Sure. So what is your recommendation, Justin? Which proposal?
Um.
Get your crystal ball out.
My. My, my gut tells me to go with the fixed cost. It's more, but then we know it won't be.
More than that, yeah.
At least with the fixed cost, we know what the amount is. Tire and materials can bite you.
Right. Yeah, it could, it, time materials, it could, it could be thirteen thousand, it could be fifteen.
That's right.
It could be twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
I will make a motion to. Approve the contract with J four systems. Fixed cost at not to exceed fourteen thousand one hundred dollars.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passed. So now you have AT&amp;T.
Yes, um.
It's the proposal that we had, right? It was a hundred and forty-five.
There were, there was a spreadsheet. And to have all this stuff together in the. So the. spreadsheet shows the spreadsheet shows the three different groups of pricing. Um, and this for a, for basically a phase one of the internet build out. So. Does anyone happen to have a paper copy that I could?
Just one?
Yes. Thank you. So. Um. This, this, first, this is fiber. Um, the, for the courthouse, the admin building, the annex building, the sheriff's office. Um. The column where it says bandwidth port and C I R, C I R, C I R stands for committed information. So. Um, this, this is basically their, what they're seeing are top speed through the network to, uh, any network, any, uh, any, any of, between the facilities and out to the internet will be um, for those facilities. Um. ASOD is the AT&amp;T Switch Internet On Demand. What that means is that, uh, once, once it goes live, um, if we need to make a change, like we, so the courthouse suddenly needs, um, five hundred megabit service because they're doing some huge data project. We can up that ourselves without calling AT&amp;T. They give us a portal to just make those changes. Um, ADI internet, that's AT&amp;T dedicated internet, so, um, that is our actual connection from our hub at the sheriff's office out to the internet proper. Um. So they gave us pricing for, so, so basically, they, um, the, the first set of pricing and is, um, where we, where, what we would need to start a fiber project for, for speeds and trying to keep the cost down. Um, with a three-year contract that comes to three thousand four hundred and forty dollars, forty-four dollars and seventy cents a month for these four buildings. Which is a lot, lot better than the, the first quarter. Um, the second, the second and third sets are basically just um, different speeds from these buildings to the hub. Um. I think the third set is probably um, the, the, the third set probably provides the best balance between the, um, between minimum, minimum viable service and ideal beginning service. Um. And the price, the pricing isn't that much more than, um, the first, the first two. Or it isn't, isn't much more than the first one, isn't too much less than the second. Uh, this, the second one, which would be, um, which is basically a hundred to a hundred and fifty megabits for everybody, is nearly four thousand dollars a month with a three-year contract. The, the balanced one is, um, three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy cents. That's most, um, the, the main difference is I, we have a slower information rate for the annex building because of fewer employees there who use the internet. There's potentially more employees as opposed to the fifteen or twenty that are at the end.
This is our monthly cost for three years.
Monthly cost for three years, and this would, this would be, this, um, this is um, the first phase, just bringing in, just bringing online the four, four buildings. And then after that, Danny and I have been working on, um, the second phase, which is to expand that fiber footprint to more of our Love Lock facilities like the community center, uh, the senior center, the road department, things like that. And then the final phase would be, um, looking at outlawing facilities.
Airport and.
Airport, other field centers, right? Um. And in conjunction with this, Heidi is working to, with, with AT&amp;T, just a different, their, their, their civil sector or the, the public, their residential and commercial service rather than their government service department to build, to leverage this to also build out fiber or other, or a hybrid solution to like the industrial. So we're we're, we're trying to keep this whale a little doubtful at a time.
Rena, we would money-wise?
I have to see all of this numbers.
Yeah.
Well, if
without that whole bunch of grant from you.
Yeah.
Well, if we went with the middle one and just said four thousand a month, just to make it easy to calculate, that's forty-eight thousand a year. That's just under a hundred and fifty.
And this would be, this would be, we'd also be removing existing service.
Correct. Correct, and, and.
Or just shifting them over.
Yeah, and that's something that we could use the funds from the, um, American Recovery Rescue Plan for. And wouldn't it be better just to go ahead and do the middle one, the one fifty, so that we have the proper speeds and everything?
The middle one or the last one? The, 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 really, the only difference between the middle one and the last one is the source speed at the annex.
Just the what?
Is the source speed at the annex, which they're, they would be fine with because they only have
Okay.
a few people there.
Yeah.
They don't need as fast a connection. Yeah, it's fifty-five, that's still, that's, that's still better than what it, than what it's like. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's fifty-five and so.
I know. It shows there, but I don't know what it's showing. See, it's right there.
Uh, this is also, um, this is also a managed network, so they handle, they handle the maintenance, the problems, they dispatch technicians. I don't have to learn how those ones fire in order to maintain. Here we go.
So do you know what our current, the current costs we're paying now?
I don't have that information right in front of me. Um, I have it all in notes and stuff on my desk upstairs. So, um.
So what would this replace as far as costs? Our phone system monthly?
Phone, uh, so our phone system would be replaced, our phone cost would be replaced by Starz Star.
Okay, yes.
Um, this would replace our internet services, our, our U-verse and AT&amp;T business internet. Um. For, for, for bill, for bills. So like the, the JPO, they would still have their current internet. The, it, it really is just a question of the, the annex building, the courthouse and admin. I don't, I don't know what specifically the numbers are, but the bills are always, they're, each department gets a bill for some reason instead of. Yeah.
If phase two, um, the probation office would get, it would be added?
Right, the, the, so phase two would probably be the JPO and Billingsley Ground Shop, they're right next to each other. The community center, the senior center. Um. And possibly going down Orobio to the road department. Um. I don't know if that would be a fiber, that might, that might be a wireless link because of the distance. Um, but it would, it would, it would be, it would be a faster link, like what we're using, what we're setting up within an address. Um. That would be, I think, I think that would probably.
So how does this fit in? J four is going to do their thing, and AT&amp;T will be doing it at the same time afterwards. I mean.
That, that's something that we have to figure, that we have to figure out, and that's the, the time. Um. It would probably be concurrent. So once, once AT&amp;T finishes, because AT&amp;T has to go that way. They don't have to go far because they're just going, they're, they have a fiber link at the annex building. So there's, there's fiber to the annex building. And the three other, the three other buildings are within five hundred feet of that building. So they would be able to just there, that's, that would be the, the central point for their goal. And then once they say, okay, we've, we've built that fiber, we're raising the speed level, then J four and I would be at the same time as they're bringing the slide, we can, uh, working to uh, transition over from our current internet to the, the new internet. Yeah. So it'd be, it'd be concurrent.
Do you have any idea on a timeframe?
No, and then I, I don't, I don't get it. They, they say, every time I ask, they say very quickly.
They say what?
Very quickly.
Oh.
Because I know that we need the speeds up desperately in the admin building and everywhere.
Everywhere, everywhere, senior center needs it.
But do you think in a few months, maybe, or within six months?
Con- conservatively, I would say probably six months.
And maybe sooner. Okay. Alright, I think we don't really have a choice. We need to go forward with this and, um.
I mean, just, just know also that, um, this was, this was part of, this is, this is all based on the previous decision of the board to go with the NIS until AT&amp;T can get, to get us a, a more complete um, a more complete proposal, and that's why we ended up not having another RFP.
Right.
So just, just in case anyone asks you, that's.
It's, it's a continuation of that, yeah, okay. Alright, so would you recommend proposal three for right now?
I would recommend proposal.
And then can it be up to, you said it, can it be changed easily?
The.
If you wanted to up the app.
Yeah.
Annex.
Yeah, the, the, the only, the only change in speed we would have to go to AT&amp;T about is the actual speed from the hub to the public internet. And that's just, that's just a phone call and going through there, or even probably just reaching out to our accountants, saying, saying, hey, we need to bump up our internet speed. Yes, and yes. That's, um, a big, a big reason why I, I chose this network topology. The, the hub and spoke, so it means back to the central point, is so that we don't have fifteen different IP addresses for the same thing. We consider those as those running to get to a certain thing. So I'm trying to consolidate all of them.
And so just to clarify, because I'm sure you already said this, this is in coordination with Danny Backs and what we need to do for that program and economic development and everything else.
Okay, this, we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to build a foundation that we can build so that we can, we can try and bring in more business, bring in more infrastructure to attract that business, try and get out of this vicious cycle of needing internet to bring in business, by needing business to bring in internet.
Right, yeah. Okay, great. So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead with option three at this point in time and do this as quickly as possible with AT&amp;T.
I'll second.
Move a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed.
Good job, Justin. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah, but.
We'll, we'll get there.
We'll get there. Hopefully, hopefully, sit around and wait.
Thank you very much.
Rodney, we can come back to you for your ambulance in Love Lock Fire. I know you had a, a little bit of a excitement this morning, so you weren't here.
So I didn't see a fire.
Huh?
I didn't see no fire.
Just smoke.
I, it didn't completely go into fire mode, so we were pretty lucky.
Okay, first thing is to apologize to Carol. She asked for some information.
You don't have to apologize.
And I was on the road, so I don't know if you got my text.
I, I saw it just now.
Okay, so I was off a little bit on that. So it's, uh, Carol wanted to know what the ambulance rates were. So our base rate is nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we use oxygen, it's twenty-seven dollars mileage, it's twenty-five dollars a mile, and for, um, supplies and disposable stuff is one ten. So that's the way I'm gonna call. The ambulance has been very busy, you know, the last, this last month has been just crazy. I don't have the numbers, but it was, it was very busy. Training there, we're still doing training in C D U. We, uh, had a class last two, it's the last training class was on Tuesday, and Sean come up and taught that, so that wasn't really well. Um, Marty's working with all the individuals that this year is our big year, where almost all of our guys have to re, re-surf to the state, so that's a big deal, where you have to get all your certifications, then to get that going, and with the COVID thing going right now, they're way behind. I mean, we're really having a hard time getting that stuff done. She, but she's working on that. So that's what's going on there. We've been working on the presentation for this afternoon at two o'clock.
So you'll be here this afternoon then?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So we're gonna do that at two, right? Yeah, so we'll be there for that. Fires with this month, we've had eight calls, we've got one new member. Um, we are testing for firefighter one in October, towards the end of October, we've already been, um, pick that date and the state has okayed it, so that's going on. We have the, uh, actually, it was the railroad training on our last training meeting that they came out and, uh, did a, a two-hour class on, on the railroad stuff, uh, sheriff's office came over and, uh, had some of his guys go through that, that also. Got the firehouse painted, I don't know if you've noticed.
I did, it looks very.
Because we haven't got a sign yet, but we got that done. It looks, looks really nice.
Um. Did you guys paint it, or did?
No.
Somebody came in and painted it?
Yeah, they hired, the city hired somebody to come in and paint it. So all's we got left to do is put one of the, the sign back up front, our over sign, and then we're gonna have a new sign made for the top because that other one was so bad. So that really looks a lot better over there. It was, never been painted since it was built, you know, something with the siding or fire inspections, I talked to Mike, just he had some others, they got a lot of stuff going on over in Brown right now too. So, uh, fire inspections, he's been doing some re-inspection. We actually inspected the, uh, community center a lot too long ago and kind of gave him a list of stuff they needed to do. We went back for a re-inspection and none of that stuff, so.
Can we get a copy of that list?
Yeah, I can give you a copy.
So you seen that, John?
You haven't seen it?
I have.
Yeah, so. You put those signs back up and repaired that exposure for the, those into the, uh, um, where you're cooking stuff, where that's hanging down. Not, not, not attached.
Oh, on that floor?
Yeah. Well, the, well, we were there, it wasn't done. The door isn't back on yet, and none of the signs were back. They have to be attached above the fire. They have to be attached above the fire extinguisher, none of that was done. And I can't remember if there was anything else on there, but. So we, we can come back over and we'll look at that and get the door back on. The guy said that office really didn't want it back on there, but.
Oh, and the extension office. Yeah, I was aware of that.
Of the door?
The door and the extension.
Yeah.
That discussion.
They have to have that on it, so. I mean, they were worried about because the refrigerator wasn't open and that, we showed me just move the refrigerator over and you could put the door back on. Yeah, so anyhow, that was one of them. We, the one that we've been having problems with, he finally got the part of it done. He's got a little bit more to do. Mike's been back a couple of times over there, then he's been talking to the fire marshal and Carson. So we're getting closer, but he's still working on it.
Yeah.
So anyhow, and then we've done some new inspections for the, uh. We did one out in the valley for somebody that's putting in a shop out there. So we went and did that, got that done, got their license signed off, so they could get their business license.
It's a nice shop.
We got one new member and he's, uh, from Core. He's already, uh, done his EVAC training and so he will be, soon as Martin gets him certified, he'll be at least a driver. So we'll at least have another person that can drive him. And then he'll be taking his EMT, uh. Certifications. Um, it's all in good shape. Um, I think we're, I think that's about it for right now. We'll be coming into CF two to talk about the, uh, ambulance. Anything you guys need? Question?
Not yet.
Gonna save it for this afternoon or? All right, so that's it.
Perfect.
Justin, you have the library on Zoom? Maybe not? Is Heidi on there for economic development?
I am, I'm here. Hi.
Hi Heidi.
How are you today?
Good, are you driving?
I am. I'm in Winamaka to meet with the treasurer again for the Winamaka's listening sense, uh, session. Um, you know, about the ARPA dollars and all that other stuff. And otherwise, um, thank you for the broadband. It is. Critical in order to continue with our businesses and industrial parks, so thank you for that. And it's pretty much just business as usual. Um, Ralph Rung from West Coast Nevada, uh, Sam in Nevada will be out. For your next meeting. Um, I need to get him on the agenda for about a fifteen minute update. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Thank you Heidi.
Thank you Heidi.
Thank you.
Public defender, you're here.
And we have a report.
How are you?
I'm good. It probably looks like I'm crying just from the smoke impact on my eyes, but. I'm feeling better than I probably was.
That's good.
No, I, I, I walked across the mirror the last two weeks and went geez. But, uh. I, I think the, the, you know, I saw it, I think on item ten, it is the Inigent Defense Plan. I like everything that's in it. Uh, you know, big, big thank you to Judge Shirley to. Uh, his assistance and then development of this. Uh, I expect probably the, the Inigent Defense Services to kind of. Admit, uh, some things they'd like to see more so and, and back and forth, forthcoming. But, uh, as far as, you know, what I do, it's pretty much the same thing. We'll have to really see once the. Shorter window for initial appearances that does not exclude. Weekends and holidays kicking in, how that'll go. But, uh, I, I think a lot of it, uh, as adequately summarized, it's, you know. These are the things you want, go ahead and pay for them. In regards, you know, to the powers that they're taking that were traditionally held by judges to appoint. Conflict council and things of that nature. You know, I think what we've been doing here since two thousand seven, two thousand eight is generally a good model and that's. What I see that's essentially intact in here. Have to go from there and see what their responses, I guess, but I fully expect it, uh. You know, to, to be a little more back and forth in terms of what they wanna see and whatnot, but other.
Excuse me?
Could we go to number ten?
After he's done?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you. I, I don't have anything more really. Outside of that, it's, you know, I always come with business as usual. Same old, same old, just do it online.
Okay.
All right, great.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I stick around first discussing? Yeah, just making sure. I didn't know if it's. Page two and not under the department, if that was me outside of it.
Okay, so we can move on to item number ten. I imagine that's why the judge is in the background.
He was behind the post.
I retract my.
So we have on the agenda approval for Persian County's amended plan for the provision of Inigent's defense services. Costs exceeding the current budget.
So. We had, you passed a plan about three months ago. And then, uh, the state in their infinite wisdom decided they wanted to change things and so legislatively they did. Um, I will start off with the comment that. It's bogus. The money, the money that they're requiring is not really money should be put. I, I think if Steve were to tell you, it would be far better if he had money for. Treatment and things like that that would help his client on the back end is where they need to help. What you'll find in most of the rules is that the VAs. Charge a case and they, they are willing to back off. And go with a lesser charge to get the person services. That's what, what a lot of defendants need are services. And rather than coming in and saying, we're gonna help you have, get counseling, we're gonna help you.
Treatment.
Work for services or. Whatever it may be on the back end, that's where it's needed. If we wanna curb crime, we need to get people busy with their hands. Working and doing things that, that will benefit society. Instead, they decided that appointment of, of counsel by judges, which has worked historically without any problems in our rules. Wasn't working because they had problems in Vegas.
Yeah.
They had problems in Vegas is what kicked all this off. They decided that, um, people were languishing in jail. Well, they weren't. That, that JP sees the people pretty quick and, and if it's not handled there, when it gets up to district court, normally we do. Or releases. So I, 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 there's, there're one to throw money at things that didn't need money. And change things that didn't even change. But we, we went through and we modeled it after. Lot of other counties such as mine and stuff, uh, we're not looking to expend a lot of money on it, but. They're supposed to have an agreement with NICO as they would pay any additional costs. So, um. I'm here to answer any question you may have or.
I agree with everything that you've said and with dividing this from day one. And when they first did the studies and have people come from. National levels and state levels, we all said the same thing, that what we're doing is right and. And good for the clients and, and the people in our community. And just because one county or two counties are having a problem, fix them and leave us alone. But unfortunately, that isn't what happened.
Don't do that about it.
No.
Well, David Carroll from the Sixth Amendment Center came out. And he, he bashed us over and over again in the four level meetings. Where he came out and actually did a site survey and he found some deficiencies that we said is not nearly as bad as they were for trainings. And he apologized.
Well, I mean, when I talked to him, he agreed that we didn't have a problem.
So, and, and. Judge Stevens, there's no way that you're getting kickbacks from the attorney sheet. You don't, number one, you don't have money.
Yeah.
And number two, there's, there's no way that's gonna happen. Everybody in the bar would know about it, everybody in the community.
Oh, yeah.
So this is all based on kickbacks in Clark County?
Yeah, where they were having, um, the judges were appointing their cronies that can't contribute to their campaigns.
Yeah, I wouldn't even say that it was necessarily a kickback. It was just, well, I'm gonna appoint someone I like. There wasn't an actual. Yeah.
But none of that's gonna happen. We don't have big, big campaigns. We don't. And I, and I don't think Judge Stevens was really good friends with any of the people out there that are appointed. But.
Yes.
I, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, the council administrator, where is a new position? If that person was needed, where would that person be located?
Here. Cause it could be electronic.
Oh, okay.
They just have to review the document.
They don't have to have a physical office here is what I, and then the other question I had was. There's a reference to DIDs, D I D S, and of course I didn't know what DIDs was until I asked. Judge Stevens, but I don't see a reference in here that explains. Do we need anything that says DID? I'm just the only one who doesn't know what it means. Okay, all right. Anyway, that was it. It looks great. You guys did a good job. And then the forty eight hour business, I mean, that's crazy.
Well. I understand what this people quickly, but forty eight hours on this. On, I think, a Thanksgiving weekend or Christmas weekend is a little bit ludicrous. And she's already making those dollar cost transactions within forty eight hours. But what they're requiring, she have a, a. A council hearing where she just turns bail and all those kind of things.
So one of the things that the board needs to consider, um, you brought up the council administrator. And that's a key component of, of this plan. Um, the rub is that the council administrator, that goes into effect, the requirement to have a council administrator. Goes into effect on October first. And under our plan, Persian County is supposed to hire as a council administrator. The problem is that money is not being provided upfront. That money is gonna be expended and then billed to the Inigent Defense Commission or Department. Or whatever they're called. And then they're gonna reimburse the county, hopefully. When I was talking to Marcy Ryba, one of her deputies on the phone after she reviewed this plan. They told me that that reimbursement is not a guarantee. And so the county needs to make a decision as to whether it's going to hire a council administrator. At cost and then hope for reimbursement after we invoice that cost. Or whether the county is going to allow the Department of Inigent Defense to handle that aspect. And remember, what that entails is essentially the appointment of, um, a conflict council. For Inigent defendants.
And it, it's also the, the billing for expert witnesses and those kind of things, they would approve them.
But that's giving the authority to that committee. Have anything to do with it.
Yeah, we didn't get to vote on anything about them like we did and do our judges.
Right.
Well, and that's, and that's fine, but the issue is Persian County right now.
It's not in our budget.
It's not in our budget and we're gonna. So, so there's the possibility that it could be invoiced and then the county needs that cost. I just want the board to know exactly what, what we're getting ourselves into.
Okay, but if, if they approve the plan, they're proving the expenditures above beyond what we had in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And they're supposed to cover any of this. They're designed to, to implement their regs, so. They're gonna have to go to Aaron Finance and get the money.
So then who actually does the selection? I believe it's the public defender. Now, who, is there a committee?
It'd be you guys openly appointed person.
Okay, so that we'll put out an advertisement or?
Steve and Court Administrator will, will do the advertisements and we'll find the person who brings it. Hopefully by your second meeting.
Because it's.
We need to find like a paralegal type person. Yeah.
Okay. And we don't have to worry about a physical office or location for them.
Nope.
Okay.
And, and they're realistically going to be doing very little work. It's essentially only finding a third tier conflict. For those expenditures like expert ones, but we've already been budgeting for that all these years. And that is within, you know, my direction to spend it. I didn't, I never had to go to. Anyone else occasionally when it was the traditional model, I would do what we would call an ex parte motion fees to the court. We never had an issue with that, so that's part of the, what are we fixing here? The system has worked just fine in Persian County related to those issues, but. The, uh, amount of third tier conflicts is probably once a year. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of looking at it that in terms of if it was a financial cost that the county was going to take on. You know, I don't know if you could, uh, per diem it or do it by task as opposed to a actual, you know. Part-time or even full-time position. It's the type of thing that, in my opinion, you're talking about less than a forty hour work week or year. To do such a job.
So the council administrator, are they gonna be hired hourly then?
Well, I think that's for, you know, you guys to determine, but in my head, I'm, I'm telling you the amount of work. Is super minimal.
Well, yeah, I'm saying we're not gonna hire someone full-time and.
Yeah.
Other than not, yeah, okay.
I think what needs to happen is that, uh. Judge Shirley, Mr. Conker and myself, but Judge Stevens should probably sit down and come up with a plan for the board. As to how this person ought to be compensated, so that the board can approve it.
Okay.
People that he wants to hire.
I think that's a great idea. So thank you for all your work. I know, I'm gonna make the motion we go forward and that we also go forward with. Um, the selection and hiring of the, and advertising of the council administrators so that. We can meet the October first deadline and we will do our best to get reimbursed from the state.
Yeah, I think you ought to call Naco. It just gives us grief about reimbursement.
We were not gonna have any additional costs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I won't do that. I'll get Bin some.
And there, to a certain degree, there's an element of control there that should remain of the county. And I, I find it a, a foreman that you would have a state entity demanding the county that they have to pay certain. If the state was supplying, that'd be fine. But the, the. That the county would have to pay money because the state says so that it doesn't.
That's crazy. Much, much less out of a lawsuit settlement that we weren't a party to, that we got bound by. Yeah.
So you have my motion.
Your motion is?
I already said.
The contract that that's agreement.
And, and, yeah, and of going forward with advertising and selecting the, um. The council administrator so that we meet October first deadline and that will come back to us for approval. Yeah, and I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor. Motion then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have a ten o'clock. Well, we have a ten o'clock. Any done for enforcement? Which one? I don't know, we have a couple of minutes, that's all it's gonna take. Okay, we'll go to number nine. Uh, the lease agreement with seven trials, discovery for the windmill properties are located at nine twenty-five Cornell and nine fifty Dart.
So before the board is a lease agreement, uh, for the lease of the windmill property. The seven trust stealing, Tom Adams is the principal holder of that LLC. And I spoke with Tom this morning. He's reviewed the lease agreement. He has no concerns about it. The effective date is September first until March, September first of two thousand twenty-one, March first of two thousand twenty-two at a rate of sixteen hundred dollars per month. Within ten days of execution of that agreement, Tom's going to make a deposit of the property, uh, the amount of sixteen hundred dollars. Cover this latest cost if we run into any. Uh, there's an option for seven trusts to stealing to purchase the windmill property for two hundred thousand, for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That more than covers any costs that the county incurred in purchasing that property, paying back taxes, maybe the former owners. Yeah, so I think the county comes out ahead. Within the lease agreement and the purchase option, it requires Persian County and seven trusts still in to enter to a purchase agreement for the windmill property. And at that time, we'll negotiate a first right refusal for the county to purchase back the windmill property. It's gonna be on a scale though, for the first year, if seven trusts to stealing doesn't have a lot invested in the windmill property. The county should be able to purchase the windmill property at the price that he paid for, the seven trusts paid for. However, if he makes a lot of investment in the windmill property, increases the value, has a lot sunk in. Then the first right of refusal will associate with parabola good value. Or what a third party would offer for the purchase of that property. That's just there. So that's what the first right of refusal language will look like in our purchase agreement with the windmill property.
And Mr. Adams is okay with all that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
So my recommendation to the board would be to sign the lease agreement. I'll get it to Tom. He'll execute it when he comes up here on Friday or the following week. And then they can start the process of moving it.
Yes, I want to make a motion to approve the lease agreement with seven drops to story for the windmill property. Also, the lease agreement contains purchase option in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I reluctantly say aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten o'clock. I know you've at there.
Good morning. Good morning.
There will be, there will be planning commission needed tonight for two person man. And unless you have any questions on the report that I gave, I don't have too much to watch. Cassell was here last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and we are, we are aligned with Cassell for utility billing.
Oh, great.
So that's gonna make these a little quicker and easier for, for the billing process. None of this, there's the other one on here. We got five new ones yesterday after we did this.
So how are we coming with the revision of the development code and the master plan? How is she?
Um, she's gotten all the, she reviewed our data. She's gotten, I think, pretty much what she needs from Far West. And she'll be getting with me probably sometime within the next couple of weeks to get some dates together for planning commission.
Okay, and public meetings and stuff like that. Great.
We'll get a game time together.
So then we have item E. I think that's where you're at, aren't you?
Uh, yeah, unless you guys had any questions on the, on the, the other stuff. Is the appeal. You guys should have the package from Robert Henderson in March of, March of twenty twenty, he submitted ten applications for billboards. Two of them, I processed and issued permits for, they were in commercial and commercial or industrial. And the other eight, I denied.
So it's, it's Mr. Henderson's appeal, so he should, he should have the first word.
Come on.
Yes, please. Good morning.
Morning, buddy.
If you could state your name for the record, that'd be awesome.
Robert Henderson, I represent the Arena Health Board. So thanks for taking my time and agendizing. I, I appreciate it. So yes, uh, as you're saying, um, March twenty twenty, I applied for a group of billboard permits. I'm not sure if we get a copy of what I submitted.
Yes.
Firstly, I purchased those properties, uh, just past the USL. You can tell, wouldn't build works on. Applied for the permits, um, and, uh, you know, these would be for total A signs visible for westbound traffic coming in the local valley. Previously, you know, I, I think the, the issue kind of was the AMR zoning. And we had applied for other permits in AMR zoning in the county over a period of a few years before this group of applications. Those were approved by county, approved by the state as well, those locations and that's on the history. Um, so I, you know, I really didn't expect any, any issue with these. But, um, you know, there, there were a couple of conversations on March third, like right when I submitted them and then it kind of, uh, I was understanding. I'd be hearing back at some point in the future. I had a couple of conversations with Mr. Shields about it and I know he was interested to get more information as to the zoning to the state. And just knew nothing really ever happened with it. I never heard back. And sometime or by, you know, over hit right around that time. So it kind of changed a lot of timelines on things. So it ended up taking kind of a whole year just about for me to get the permission from the state because they kept having these shutdowns and things. But ultimately, they issued all the permits for all eight of the billboards. And, um, anyway, you know, I got this letter recently. I was reaching out to Bryce again and asking, you know, trying to really understand if they were truly denied ever or not, because I never got official communication denying them. You know, I, I, I did get a post-it note back from, from James. But it wasn't really addressed to me. I don't, you know, it just, all it said was not allowed in AMR. It doesn't miss it all. And if there was an official denial issued, I'd, I'd like a copy of it. Has I ever received that? But, you know, more recently, after I had more conversations or through emails, stuff with, with Bryce. As you happen to issue me a letter just, uh, in August. And the letter basically said, you know, this is at this letter is confirmation, your permit application were denied last year. But I, I, I just don't really accept that because I, I don't believe they denied last year. I have a letter in my file saying they were denied. So I'm considering that. Just last month. So anyway, that's why I feel because, um, you know, it's, I understand that zoning and billboard matters a little bit difficult. Uh, there are levels of regulation, local, state, federal. I just view it as a, an error in, in, you know, processing. I don't view it as anything with that. But from my perspective as a little businessman, you know, trying to, it's important to me that I get a fair, you know, and, and just like consideration of applications based on codes that were in place at the time that I applied. So of course predates the new sign. So really, that, that's why I'm here is to just ask the three of you to, um, to consider the, the issue. You know, hopefully feel like I'm. So I did submit some supporting documentation in here. Um, there's the copies of the actual applications that I signed into the county. That was the first item. Big surprise there, just to see what the applications look like. These are very similarly the same as half the patients I cited for many other signs or period of, you know, twenty thirteen sort of. And these are applications. Around the. Fill the signs out. Secondly, I attached the, um, applications to the state so that state in matter for billboard to apply. Freeway, they regulate the freeway as well, and I love them to spare to approve it. So the most notable part about these, since in my mind, is if you look down on one of these applications. There's a section of the county administrator, in this case, as you're having to fill out. And one of the items that he is to sign off on, when he fills it out, says, does this sign comply with all the requirements? Including all various systems and experiments. So that's basically telling the state, yeah, this, the sign, application, this location. Meets the requirements of the county for zoning and location, whatever factors that are locational. Also, it's marked AMR zoning description for, um, for applications on these parcels. And so it serves as a sign off on that. Same. Remiss checkbox, yes. So obviously that is confusing if they do conform then later until they're not allowed. And that's on industry where they've already been indicated they are allowed. Next item is, um, a nice letter that I referenced with, um, so. You know, from Mr. Evans on the day I applied. That's one purpose today, we need to look into some things first before we go forward. So saying the county commissioners are having a discussion and will might take action on billboard matters tomorrow, James. So, you know, one of the items that makes me say, well, they were still. Decided matter that response was. The, the next item. Online is just examples of prior Persian County Building Department permits for building billboard signs in AMR district. So I attached three prior applications which were, um, you know, why I approved the mark down in the name of AMR. And. And, yeah, not just the application, actually. The actual builder and the copy. Find each of them with the final inspection sign off. Probably the very top, most recent of these three, which is the top copy. Look at the final inspection sign off. That was on March second, twenty twenty. Okay, that's one day before I apply. They were approved in finals. You're allowed AMR for essentially. Next day, you know, for some reason, not allowed. So, um, that's what my concerns are. That's why I feel like it shouldn't. At the time, you know, the code did allow for it. So, um, you know, that, that's, that's really all I'm asking for is to approve those permits. And in the letter, I put a couple of paragraphs, you get a chance to read it just for, you sound really, just, just kind of describing. Material so that, that whether it's right up on the premise to be approved, it's just the description to help you understand where, where we're coming from.
Comments?
Roger. Actually, what, what, what do we want to start first? With, well.
At the beginning.
The permits that I did issue, the, the three permits that I did, did issue in AMR. I believe I issued one here. But I can't, I can't take that back. Um, after I issued those three in AMR, I got a, I forget who it was, it was a call from N dot, from the state. They, they were wanting to confirm that we were actually allowing them in AMR because typically they, they don't, they don't allow them in. So after that, that's when I, I started digging a little more. And we have, that was when we had nothing in our code to address. Address building permits.
Well, assess to address signs and building permits. And the areas where signs would be built, whether it's in AMR, commercial, industrial, etc.
Yeah, pretty much in any land use district. It, it doesn't address the billboards anywhere. So I, I provided you guys with our use classification in chapter three or four. And in part of denying Robert's permits in section seventeen, three oh four fifteen. That gives me the authority to classify, um, use types to determine that the use does not fit under the, any use type and therefore not permitted. So the lack of any guideline in the development code. Gives me the authority to say that without hearing, without notice, it's an administrative decision on them. Um, so I did that. When I returned his eight permits to him, um, there, I put them in an envelope, I addressed them to him. And there was a, there was a sticky note on the front of the permits that said that these are denied. Cause they are not allowed in, in AMR. Some things that I can't remember the exact word, but it was. That I wasn't going to process them because it's not allowed. And to say that because I err the first time, that doesn't mean that you get to keep repeating that. Um, and the information that I did provide you guys as well, and under spoken administration of the, the building code that you were under at the time. Um, in, beyond page. Page five, the validity of a permit. And it's fifteen or one oh five dot four, is this the issuance or granting of a permit shall not be construed to be a permit for, or an approval of any violation of any of the provisions of this code or any other ordinance of the jurisdiction. From its presumed, you have authority to violate or cancel provisions of this code or any. From its presumed give authority to violate or cancel provisions of this code or any ordinance of the jurisdiction shall not be valid. So. Basically, I can't. If we're not allowing it anymore, I can't issue permits. Because I would be issuing a written violation of. Of basically of seventeen through. Which. I've already said they're not allowed anymore. But.
Well, I think there's also an issue. Staleness on the appeal. If you look at the development code. Uh, once a denial has occurred, uh, the appeal has to be taken within ten days of that denial. And really, this board has to decide whether James's posted note. That he sent to Robert Kenner Kennerson back in March of two thousand twenty constitutes effective notice of a denial. James says that the post note said not allowed in AMR. That it was attached to the building permits that would be denied and it was addressed to Mr. Kederson and Mr. Kederson. From what I heard, he acknowledged that he received the posted note. Informing him that they have been denied. I think his complaint is it's just not formal. Enough for his taste, but in the development code, it doesn't say how formal a denial has to be. Just that it doesn't even say has to be in writing. But James provided that notice to him in writing. Uh, if in fact it was denied, then Mr. Kederson has to make his appeal within ten days. If he doesn't make his appeal within ten days, then. His right to appeal is lost. There's also an issue. Of the staleness of the building permits, even if they weren't denied in a formal letter. You have a certain period in which to approve or deny a building permit. And if you don't act on a building permit within that specified time period, the building permits expire. They're no longer valid. And I believe that James explained that to Mr. Kederson in an email. I think it's six months.
What what what's a permit is issued if there, yeah, there's no, there's no activity expiring.
Fun issue submitted.
Submitted, the submission is also.
Okay, so if they're submitted, you have that the IRC is at the international.
Yeah. And that is, that is in. That's under, that's the ones that are applied that read that one is actually an application.
Or an extension can be requested.
Yeah.
Is that what I read?
Yeah, yeah, or an extension can be requested. And and I might add as well is if if there was this concern on Mr. Kederson's. Part when he did get the. When he did receive the permits back. Um, and you had the concern, why wasn't it addressed? I mean, right. Right then, I mean, have the opportunity to come back and say, well, what is this? Are these formally denied? And if if there was a concern about the post note that was on. And whether they were denied or.
So you actually returned the original permits that he that he had submitted.
I returned all. All eight permits in an envelope with his name on it with a sticky note. Said that they're. Returning them because they're.
And then the sign permit application that you signed at the bottom for the state and the date you signed it was December seventeen, twenty nineteen. That was before you were aware that AMR. They were that billboards were not allowed and AMR. Were signing.
Yeah, he 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 could bring these in sometimes several months before.
Right.
Before it would actually get approved. But yes, it was, and a lot of the stuff was evolving. We weren't sure where we're going to go with if we're going to have sign orderments and we didn't have any. There wasn't anything in the development code that gave the guidance. For billboards, so. Going back to the the seventeen, three oh four oh five, that's that's where I.
So when when did you become aware, I'm sorry, of when AMR was not. Proper zoning?
I actually don't recall when 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 I.
Was it before December of twenty nineteen?
No, I believe it was. Actually, I believe it wasn't before because I would actually, I wouldn't have signed.
Yes, that's what my question is. Okay.
And the district attorney has no.
Well, I would note, uh, just so that the commission has all the facts. In March of two thousand twenty, the board. Placed a moratorium on the future construction of billboards, right? I think that that was agendized and.
It was.
Uh, it seems like there was a flurry of billboard applications to that were submitted prior to that. Moratorium. Owners of property and owners of billboards were trying to get their applications in under that deadline before moratorium could be imposed.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, that that fact, it can cut both ways. It can pay in favor of Mr. Anderson or. Against Mr. Anderson, just depending on how this, uh, how the the board to use it. I think the issue that the court or the, excuse me, that the board has to decide is whether this is an arbitrary, capricious act of. Mr. Evans to deny those applications, but you see that under. The building code, uh, he has the authority to decide whether particular use fits within a specific use type. And at the time, our building code did not give any direction to the planning director as to whether billboards could fit within the AMR. And the planning director received instructions from the state that typically the state did not authorize or typically the state did not see. Applications, successful applications for billboards within the AMR. And based upon that representation. The planning director decided to reverse what he had previously been doing and decided to deny the applications. Uh, Mr. Kederson at the time probably should have acted on that. Bill with ten days. But he didn't. But whether the board. Is going to deny it on that ground depends largely on whether the board thinks that the post note constituted effective notice of that. And then there's also the fact that those permits, if they weren't denied, they sat in the planning director's office for more than a year. Before Mr. Kederson came before the board and brought the matter up. And the problem with that is that after six months. Whether those permits are denied or approved, they expire.
Right.
So, Mr. Kederson, you did receive the original permit applications back?
Uh, yes, I did. Um, but it wasn't atypical for me to receive permit copies or I don't care the versions of copies, but. You know, usually I would submit the applications. I'd get stamp copies back because I always ask them to take stamp on this. So. That alone doesn't to me mean that he didn't have a copy for his processing or his records or whatever for the department. You know, he definitely mailed me. Stuff back with the post.
And did the note, did the posted note, as you recall, say that it was denied?
No, it didn't. So, um, Mr. Evans just now explained the post and he said that. It said not allowed in Neymar, which is what I've been saying instead because I emailed that to Mr. Shields. That's what I just told you was said. He said that it also said that they were denied because they were not. Say, no, I didn't say that. He also said that it said, you know, the prior issuance of permits wasn't the basis for. Or doesn't mean necessarily that more permits would be issued. Didn't say that either. And it was said forward, said not allowed in AMR. He had his initials. And it had the date, March third, twenty twenty. Okay. So what is that? Is that a note to me? It doesn't say, dear Robert, dear reading editor, we're denying your permits based on, I mean, this code doesn't say. Based on the code section he's referencing right now. That, you know, that's the basis for denying it. Um, if it was, you know, if it was, I feel like he would have put that in the post. It seemed more likely to me. He's looking for a basis, though. It's got to fall something down there. And while here, this gives me authority to deny based on. This code section, but, you know, I've applied for a lot of permits in this jurisdiction and others. And anytime I never really had anything denied that I can think of in Persian County, but, you know, when I've had a permanent application denied. I get a letter back from the city or the county. It says it would deny your applications and this is why. It's on letterhead. It's a proper. Official, you know, communication. Where you can see. Right, but it's not a post. It's not addressed to me. After all, I know it could have been an inter-office communication between him and his, and Hollywood's the staff at the time. Maybe it was back and forth between them. Maybe he had a conversation with Mr. Shields and said, we determined it's not allowed. So he wrote that. That was his conversation between them. Um, he was able to himself to remember. I mean, I I don't know what it was. But it certainly doesn't say that we're denying it. And it's. I I think of a county government as an organization that issues proper communications. So, you know, that's. That's the story on the post.
Yeah. And then the second item is the. The timing factor as far as applications become null and void after a period of time. Is that correct? I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly or not. So.
So, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So. There's a couple of issues there. There's, there's, what is the actual, you know. Statue that they're referring to as far as when do applications expire? And then there's also the point they brought up about. You know, why did I not have done it? So. I guess going in probably more chronological or as far as why didn't have done it. So when I submitted the applications that day. I came in the morning and I got a call a couple hours later from Mr. Shields because, um, you know, I had submitted a pile of applications and there was ten or eleven, whatever it was. And. You know, they they approved a couple of them right off because they were easy to to look at. And the this group, though, was a little hard to to figure out. So. I make notes when I. You know, do applications and stuff. So my notes, I mean, they're not completely everything, which is I make notes. So my note. From that conversation, twelve fifteen P M, March third, Mr. Shields. Uh, we discussed my current applications, but one being the LBR zone. Ultimately, proven on an issue here. He said they're not allowed in a marzone for the state statute requiring commercial industrial zones. I said, well, you know, they, the state. Have issued AMR zoning permits in the best. Those are for the the three that I put in. Back. Mr. Shield said he would like to talk to someone from the state to understand why before issuing the permits, because as he understands it, zoning has to be commercial or industrial. So anyway, at that point, my understanding is Mr. Shield wants to get more information from the state, right? So. Uh, now, a little while later, I think he looked into the more to call me back again and we talked about further. Uh, he said that he's spoken to James. They'll issue the permits right away for the LDR zoning board. And then there was also, there was one in the, in my notes, one in the city. Who issued those permits right? Uh, we talked about unzoned, uh, commercial industrial. Areas again. So the kind of issue with the state code is it says, well, you got to be in commercial industrial areas. My understanding of it is it doesn't say that zoning has to be called commercial or it has to be called industrial is the character. And when you look up what AMR is, you know, one of the things that allows mine, that's pretty industrial. And I think that's why they have approved. The applications in that district in the best. But I I described to Bryce. That before the last round of permits that I had applied for and received from the state. That they had asked the federal highway administration. Whether the zonings were allowed. Because they they wanted to get second, higher opinion of their own, right, or higher decision. And then then they went ahead and so they they got affirmative back. That's okay. So that, to my understanding, is why the state was issuing permits. Um, not because they were under a communication from Mr. Evans. They know, yeah, we're okay with that. They went to the federal agency to get that, to understand that. Opinion of this. Anyway, ended that conversation again. Mr. Shield said he would like to verify. What I just said, that the state issue had asked the federal administration, it's not allowed. Mr. Bryce, Mr. Shield said he would like to verify that to someone at the state. Okay, so from this point, I'm waiting for Mr. Shields to verify that to the state. I'm waiting for return communication. So this, that's, that was the status for a long time thereafter. That's why I didn't reach out immediately again because he's very busy. He's got a big workload. I know it takes time sometimes and. So and then, of course, again, we're in the middle of COVID, so it was falling apart in March and April of last year, you know. So. I I didn't, I didn't push back on that and I didn't communicate back and. Um, I just went ahead and stuck with the state permit process. So, you know, not abandoning this stuff at all and. Continually flying up with the state because hey, I need those permits and those permits and it took almost like I said, one year. Anyway, so that that's why I didn't. That that's just the status of communications and what I was. Your other question was about whether the habitations expire. Okay. It's a. From what I, what I understand, this comes down to international building code. That's the reference that she's taking with regard to this a few weeks back. So I looked up the code section. There's, there's really two sections, one five point three point one says. Uh, the building official shall examine the cause of the examined applications for permits and then is there to within reasonable time after filing. If the application and construction documents. Do not conform the requirements, the building officials shall reject such application in writing stating the reasons. Therefore. An official is satisfied that the proposed work conforms to the requirements of this code and laws and ordinances applicable there to the building official shall issue a permit there for a senior. Um, again, my position is we've done this on multiple other applications over four years prior. They were always improving the zoning. So. To my reading of this, you know, they met the requirements of. The applicable laws and ordinances, building officials shall, should have issued a permit. The next section speaks specifically to whether, you know, when, whether applications expire. Uh, one of five point three point two is called time limitation of application. Read the whole thing and I'll break it down. So it says, an application for a permit for any proposed work shall be deemed to have been abandoned one hundred eighty days after the date of filing come. Unless such application has been pursued in good faith or. Time, except that the building official is authorized to grant one more extension of time, additional periods, not seen by any basis. Saying to be requested in writing just about the cost of this. So going back, it says, the first part is an application for a permit for any proposed work. Shall be deemed to have been abandoned one hundred and eighty days after the date of filing. Unless. Such application has been pursued in good faith. Okay, my applications were pursued in good faith as I just described.
I know. Who would they, who would they, who were they pursued with? They weren't proceeded to tell me to agree with that.
No, because I was waiting on communication back from you.
You did get communication from the county. You got communication from the county in the form of. A letter that was provided to you by James. Maybe it wasn't a letter, but he sent your applications back to you. With his notes saying it's not allowed at the AMR. And our conversation, it was specifically about whether billboards were allowed at the AMR. You agree with that?
You were in my conversation?
Yeah, yeah. And then you received your communication from the county, although it wasn't formal enough for you, but it did say not allowed at the AMR.
Well, is that correct? It was dated the same day. So if it was dated March third, same day you and I had the conversation. So there's no timestamp on this post note. And.
But you got.
I have an email from him on the same day also saying we're going to look into more things. So it's, it's.
I don't know. When did you receive it?
He mailed it like a month later. But it was dated March third. I'm not sure why you did it March third and mail it, you know, April third, but. That's, that's what it was.
I don't know either. And Robert, I have no record. Of me communicating whether I communicated with you back or sent you an email and you didn't receive it or whether I tried to call you. I don't know what our conversations were. Because the county system. So I tend, I have no way to refute that I didn't ever communicate to you that I had talked to the state or that I didn't talk to the state. But ultimately, what was decided is that the state of Nevada doesn't control local ordinances.
Right.
And then the state of Nevada feels like they're going to allow. Uh, billboards at the AMR. That's, that's nothing to do with us. And the way that we govern the AMR is it's allowed for mining. It's allowed for agriculture and it's allowed for recreation. It is allowed for some industrial purposes aside from mining. But there has to be a special use permit. And because there's nothing in the development code at that time that allowed for a billboard at the AMR, much less allowed for a billboard in the AMR. With a building permit that was denied. And that was, that was why James said it was supposed to go.
Yeah. Of course, if 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 they had never been approved prior, I wouldn't be here today. Sure. Um, you know, if I had three different applications. Approved in different years. I mean, this is a longstanding precedent of we can do a billboard. Approved in different years, I mean, this is a longstanding precedent of we can do a billboard at A M R, and then I go ahead and purchase the property. In A M R because I know that I can do billboards there, and the code hasn't changed, and now it just, Mr. Evans wakes up and decides, well. We're not gonna do it anymore, I'm sorry, but that doesn't, it's not fair to me. I work real hard to do what I do, and it can be a big investment to buy a property specifically. And and again, you know, I also know that we could use, we could use a few more billboards from that side, we have less over there, you know, it's.
So when, when do you wish you, when do you wish you'd billboards of A M R? When were you issued billboard permits in A M R?
So they were. Sixteen seventeen nineteen.
Is that the years you're talking about?
August first twenty sixteen. February eighth twenty seventeen. October tenth twenty nineteen.
And then when did you purchase your properties in the A M R?
That one.
You submitted eight applications.
Yeah, from the beginning of the letter, um, October twenty nineteen is when I purchased the property, so I was probably asked to throw. Finish that, or ask me apply to that, that last permit that was issued on October first. You know, so it was just an ongoing continuation of a, of a, the business that had already been happening.
So all age of your applications were on the same property?
It's two parcels, seven on one parcel, one on the other, um, bought at the same time, though, one transaction.
I still believe, uh, or I do believe that the planning and building department acted accordingly, uh, nothing wrong with the way the, the business that you did.
I do have a question, is the Highway Beautification Act that's somewhere in the nineteen sixties still in effect?
Yeah, it's called the Lady Bird Johnson Act, I have a beautification act, it makes it says that along the corridor of highways, you can't have billboards within six hundred and fifty feet. Of a highway. And that's not really the issue here, you know, they were outside of six.
I mean, I think, I have posted, so I might show you. You can see that what I'm telling you is true, it didn't say all these things. So this is the post-it note right here, okay?
You're, I'm sorry, I can't see that far away.
You know, the same day I came out, March third, saying we're not going to issue buildings today, we're looking at some things first before we go forward. So, you know, I've got multiple communications in the same day, I don't know if this one's even, it's definitely gonna say my name on it, so, you know, I understand. I think the county. Better communications than that. As far as.
You've done a, a lot for the community in many ways, and you've purchased a lot of property and. Put up a lot of billboards and done, you know, other things as well, I know you have quite an investment in the community, and um. Unfortunately, it's just a combination of things, but that does say that's not allowed in A M R. So I would take that to be a denial, and then if I had a question regarding it, I would have followed up right away. And then I would have said, well, do I have an appeal? And I would have done that.
Yeah.
You've got a huge investment in these properties, I realize that, plus eight billboards is quite um income. You know, for you too, but to me, I, I accept that as a denial, and so um. I, I, do you have any other comment? I mean, this is a tough decision because. You know, I would like to rule in your favor, however, I take that as a denial, so based on that, I would make a motion that. You know, we cannot reverse all of this, and the permits were denied um in a timely manner. And there were several conversations with the D A, and again, I would have followed up, if it had been me, I would have followed up, but I take it as they were denied. And I'm sorry, Robert.
I did follow up later with, with Mr. Shields, it's been months of trying to get an answer on this, I mean, this, this came up in. Towards the end of winter, when I was trying to call his office and reach him. And it took a while to, to finally get Mr. Shields on the phone, and he said he would look into it, but this was back in April. This year, and it took, you know, several months, again, to get. Response and and.
Hold on a second, so Robert, you're blaming, you're blaming me because you waited an entire year to contact my office?
I didn't wait a year, though.
But you just said our last conversation was March twenty twenty. And then you followed up with my office in April twenty twenty one. And I'm, I'm sorry.
I didn't say that's an issue with your office, sir.
Did you contact James's office?
No, no, I, I did not, and I was, I was, I, here's the issue, because I applied at the building permit, building department for permits, and then. I get calls from Mr. Shields to discuss them, so I don't know who I'm going to for the information, but James always defers. And says, well, you know, if you don't like it, you gotta talk to Bryce, so that's how I ended up waiting on a, on a decision or what more information from Mr. Shields, so. Like I said, in that conversation, please, please let me finish, then go ahead, okay?
Sure.
He said that he would like to verify with the state, what I told him that they had um asked the federal highway department if the zones were allowed, and got affirmative and issued a prior permission today. Again, this is during COVID, I'm trying to call the state too for status and my application, they're telling me, hey, we're closed, we're not doing anything, we're not processing anything. So I figured Mr. Shields is, if he's trying, he's not getting anywhere either, because I can't get any of them on the phone for like the whole of the COVID year, you know? I did call. I've got a phone log, and I did call your office um. July ninth twenty twenty, leaving a message to call me. I don't believe that was ever returned. And, you know, I'm, I'm building out early permits, so I'm, I'm waiting, he's busy, what can I say, and then I called back in towards the end of winter. I'm like, that's just been forever, why I'm not hearing back, you know? And I had to call a couple of times, and then I had to send an email, and finally after the email, then, then he called me, so I'm not getting the messages, but if you know, calling, I'm following up. And a conversation in April of this year, um, he said he would. He, he asked me to, to email him that I had gotten the permits from the state, which I did, and he said he would get back to me, he didn't get back to me. I sent him an email on May third, he didn't get back to me, this year. I waited a couple of months again, I called in July. And. Towards the end of July, we, we finally connected and had some discussions on it, and that's when he told me, like, the code section says your permits expire, your applications expire, but he said he would. Talk to James about it, there was four months, because, you know, of course, he's very busy, lots of things on his plate, so he didn't remember all the details, I talked to James, so. I mean, I'm following up with this stuff along the way, and. You know, this is not just, I got this posted and forgot about it for a year, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, to respectfully follow up without pestering. And I, I've, I followed up off and on throughout the whole period of time.
Or it's a convenient way not to have to confront James about the denial. Because you could contact my office at all and say, hey, call me.
Well, you would always call me. And, and if, at, at the time of the application, uh, Mr. Evans said that I needed to speak with James, because. He was getting the information from James to deny or not process for whatever you want to call it, the applications, not issue the applications, then you're talking to Mr. Shields. So that's, that's, that's the directive I'm under, that's what I'm doing.
And it, it's not uncommon, if I have questions, then I refer to legal counsel, I get questions, but I would have been happy to explain that, posted it to you, if you would have come to me up to my office.
So, so you have a, a motion, you did a motion.
I can.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, I was in favor of the motion. I am motion passed.
I'm really sorry, Robert.
Yeah, me too.
I, guys.
So is Esther on?
Yes, I am, I'm just not very good at getting my unmute button hit.
There you are.
You're not alone in that, I'm having trouble yesterday on a call. I was unmuting the wrong thing.
Sorry for the, the delay, but hello and welcome.
Thank you, so um, I don't know if you, we can, I'll try and turn the camera on here, and I also have Kathleen Rayburg. Our Humboldt River Field Office Manager, I'm trying to turn this a little bit. Andy Boriter, I'm trying to say it correctly. He is our, um, he's our assistant field manager for the Blackrock Field Office, Mark is out on Playa, Mark Hall, our field manager. And I have Donovan Walker, who's our, I'm turning it.
Good morning.
Fire management officer to help report out to everybody, so um. I, I can kind of put this in between and, and try and. Go over things from here, or I can turn the camera off, whatever's better for you, Will.
Well, can we see you?
Oh, sure.
We can see your shoulder.
Okay, good.
Sure.
Hi Esther, long time.
I, um, yeah, and, and um, I'm gonna be having them talk about their different programs, so that's part of why we're all here. But um, it's been a while since we've met, it's really great to see all of you, and first off, I wanted to say thank you, Carol, for getting that um. Document signed so that we could move forward with the Unionville Cemetery Reverter Clause, so. Uh, I will steal Kathleen's thunder there and just tell you, we've sent it up to the state office, and they're working on that paperwork now, so it is in process.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, and with that, I'm gonna start turning it over to each different program unless you have any questions you wanted to start off with.
No, we'll get you at the end.
Okay, no problem. So, um, I guess since we'll go in order, Andy's sitting here, I will turn this, and Andy can do what's going on in the Blackrock Field Office.
All right, good morning, everyone. Um, so, the major thing I'm gonna talk about this morning is obviously the uh Blackrock Playa and what's going on out there, probably a pretty big interest. Um, currently, we've got a camp count of about five hundred and fifty-six people out there, or camps, with a total of about forty-six hundred people. Uh, we've got zero media inquiries so far, uh, we've got a staff total of about seven civilians, uh, B L M civilians. Uh, fourteen B L M uh law enforcement, nine Persian County, and one contractor uh working this event. Uh, some significant points of interest, uh, we've had issues with the internet at the station. Uh, in increased visitation, which has kind of distracted some of our staff from uh being able to get out and actually monitor some of the camps. We've got uh Guardian Elite uh Medical Services uh out there on the Playa, uh, that was, that was an agreement uh established by the Nevada Department of Health. Uh, so they're currently out there as our medical support. Uh, so as far as law enforcement and what's been going on out there, uh, thirty warnings have been given uh to the various people out there for infractions. Such as, as fire, riding on top of vehicles, uh, other, other sorts of things, speed, uh, speeding, having lasers, that sort of thing. Uh, overall, not, not too bad. And then uh the B L M law enforcement did assist the Persian County Sheriff's Office with one arrest. Uh, with the subject, uh, from a subject that was a, came to us here from Florida. I don't know what he was arrested for, so my apologies for that. We have had two uh uh. Serious accidents out on the Playa, one was a U T V and a gentleman rolled his U T V, was airlifted. Uh, or not airlifted, was, was transported down to uh Reno for a broken neck and some, some broken bones. And then the other one was a rolled vehicle uh with two occupants that uh just managed, they, they managed to walk away, so no, no issues of, or injuries to them. Any questions for the Playa, about the Playa?
I didn't catch, how many people are out there right now, about?
So as of last night, uh, about forty-six hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that expected to grow?
It is expected to grow, uh, we're expecting a big influx uh today and tomorrow, uh, we're estimating anywhere, anywhere between uh ten thousand and fifteen thousand people. And we've been tracking that through uh online websites and, and Facebook and that sort of thing. That's where we're getting our numbers.
Is that larger or smaller than Fourth of July?
Is that, is that larger or smaller than Fourth of July?
Yes, much, much larger, I think we only had fifteen hundred people out there from Fourth of July.
Where did they come up with those names?
I have no idea. I have no idea, but they are, they are creative, they are creative, so. I'll have to ask that.
Yeah.
When I talk to some of them.
You, you know, the, the one in October is Octiplaya. Like the Halloween.
Really?
I think that's what they call it, is Octiplaya, which is Halloween time, yeah, we have really, they, they come up with them on the internet, we just see it off of social media.
So a couple of the other uh topics uh related to the Jackson Mountains, uh, we've got the. The herd management E A uh out, so the initial uh preliminary E A is out. Uh, to the public, and we are expecting responses and comments from them uh are due to us by the twenty-seventh of September. Once we get those comments, we will uh review them. Uh, and possibly incorporate them into our final decision, so that's kind of where the track of that is.
And that's a ten-year gather plan, right?
Right, and that's a ten-year gather plan. Uh, currently, we have a emergency gather on the Jackson Mountains. It's slated to go the fifteenth of September, so in a couple of weeks, it will be kicking off. We're looking to remove six hundred horses from the uh, from the Jackson Mountains uh over a period of seven to ten days. And the reason we are removing them is, is the body uh. They're not looking well, and the, and the drought and everything else has contributed to it, so.
Lack of forage and lack of water.
Yes, so we are looking to, to get those off. And then uh for the Calico E A, environmental assessment, that, that was signed, and that's another ten-year plan. My apologies. Uh, that was fin- final decision was rendered on twenty-eight July. Uh, there is a, no, there's a schedule for the Calico, uh, gather on the Calico's next year, but no date has been determined as of right now. And then the final, final point I have for the Blackrock Field Office is the Gerlock uh exploration that's currently going on. Uh, we're currently working with Oremat on, on various things to uh progress this initiative. Uh, the primary one that we're waiting for is the hydrology report, uh, that they need to get to us uh for review.
And that's geothermal exploration.
Okay.
And pending any questions, that's all I've got from the Blackrock.
Good report, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to Kathleen.
Slide over so you can see me.
I'm trying to move the.
We can move my inbox if we need to.
Oh, that's okay. I'll just hide behind it every now and then. So for minerals, um, Relief Canyon Mine Expansion, uh, the final E A was published.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, E I S, yes, I am so sorry, uh, final E I S was published uh with the E P A on the twentieth of August. The Notice of Availability uh for B L M went on August twenty-third. So we expect to have that recorded decision uh signed by uh the end of September. And uh, that's just an expansion of their current mine, and it's within their planned boundary. Um, so that has been in the works for a couple of years, and that's finally coming to an end. And then um. Lincoln Hill Exploration, um, it was in the same. It was in the same location as the previous Orianna Exploration Project, which was never completed. Cor Rochester brought, bought those mining planes since they're adjacent to the Cor Rochester Mine. That draft DA went out for public comment on the twentieth of August, and that will be out for a thirty-day comment period. The exploration, it's for about two hundred and fifty acres altogether. I think Phase One is about twelve and a half acres. So they'll just be doing your standard, you know, drilling, exploration activities. They might do a few monitoring wells for, you know, hydrology data. So that'll be out for thirty days. We'll see what comments come back on that. Did someone just ask something? Okay, thought I heard something. So also geothermal, we have a October geothermal lease sale, and that's statewide, but Persian County, I believe there are six parcels that are going to be up for that, that October sale. There was a, an EA that was, was done for that. Esther will be signing the decision on that October first. And then that lease sale will go forward. And I think the majority of the parcels are down by I-80, down by Carson Sink. And then there's a few, I think, a few parcels that are over kind of Blue Wing area. So those will be, those will be sold in October. And then for Ormat Projects, they have their Juniper project, which is still in baselines, and that's over by Black Warrior Peak. So we've been working on that one. Star Peak Geothermal, we've been working with them on a right-of-way and also a utilization plan. And that's the one that's right next to Florida Canyon Mine, right there on I-80. And then lands, of course, Esther already talked about, yeah, already talked about Unionville, and then Sea Punch Land Sale. That appraisal, the appraisal's been contracted. Usually, it was contracted a few weeks ago, and it usually takes about ninety days. A draft report in for review. And so we're hoping to get that done by the end of the year, get that appraisal completed, and so that that land sale, the Notice of Realty Action can get published in the Federal Register, and we can continue with that process. And then we did get a kind of looking at a nomination for Clear Creek Canyon for a Sniplama project. In other words, we would be buying that property, and it would become federal property. We're looking at that right now for a nomination. So we'll, we'll, more on that to come. And then range. We have a DNA that was out, protest period ended on August twenty-sixth. The appeal period will end on September twenty-sixth. And that's for Sea Punch Water Hall, for Sea Punch Ranches.
And a DNA is a determination of NEPA adequacy, meaning that the legal we've done in the past is good, it's enough.
So that's, that's working in the works right now. And and as far as drought within Humboldt River, within our field office, we've had about eighteen permities that have taken voluntary reduction in numbers to help with those drought conditions. So we've not had to make anyone take any cows off. So far, it's all been voluntary. Wild Morrison Borough. The East Pershing Complex was flown in June, and I believe it's on the schedule for a gather for twenty-twenty-two. So that's kind of an update there, and I think that's all I have from, from Humboldt River Office. Any questions on any of that?
I don't have any. I have nothing. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And then I'm gonna push this over to Donovan.
The fire guy.
Yeah, for fire management.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I'm gonna give you a little rundown from the Division of Fire here, and then what about the District? Our preparedness level currently at a two of five, so pretty moderate on our preparedness level. Fire danger remains very high, our indices remain high. However, thankfully, it's been a really, really slow fire season. There hasn't been a lot of activity this year. Our occurrence is down significantly as opposed to average with, we've had thirty-seven fire responses this year in acres, well, well below average at a hundred and twenty-seven acres for the entire summer, and that's all jurisdictions. Specifically on BLM, we've had seventeen fires for thirty acres. BIA up in Fort McDermott Country, two fires for fifty-nine acres, and then we've had eighteen mutual aid fires with all of our different volunteer departments in all counties for a total of thirty-eight acres. So it's nice to actually have a break here because we're able to send a lot of our resources elsewhere to help the national fire situation this year, which is dire. It's one of the longest periods of planning Level Five nationally that's existed on record. And several pretty high-profile fires, I'm sure that you guys have heard of, we're eating the smoke every day from them. So we have several resources assisting out in California and other areas of the country this year. So that's kind of the statistics. We're maintaining our drawdown levels of resource availability here locally. So if we do get something around here, we're able to still respond while maintaining this posture of helping our neighbors. As far as our budgets go, this year, we received quite a bump in our budget on both the fuel side and the preparedness side. Those base budgets are expected to continue. So for fiscal year twenty-two, our preparedness budget, no further increases, but we'll maintain those higher levels that we realized this year. On the fuel side of things, we're looking at about a thirty percent bump in our base budget this next fiscal year that equates to roughly a million dollars additional. And so with that, additional personnel, we're looking at bringing onboard through hiring to accomplish a larger workload. Last year, we accomplished about forty-six thousand acres in accomplishment. We're on track to easily be there or slightly above for this year on our accomplishments at about forty-seven or forty-eight thousand acres this year. We're just getting those numbers finalized for our reporting for the fiscal year. But we anticipate that'll be again roughly a third of the acres accomplished for the state. Specifically for fuels, looking at what's planned out for this next fiscal year for specifically for Persian County. We've got about ninety-three hundred acres planned, various treatments, a lot of it taking place around the Caneta Project area out there. It's a project area we spoke of in in previous meetings that we've completed planning for and are going to be working towards implementation. And then we're also going to be looking in this next fiscal year to expand our Field Break project that's called the East, excuse me, West Winamaka and Grass Valley Field Breaks, and we're gonna be looking at extending that into Persian County further into Grass Valley. Again, this is something we visited on earlier and also had discussions with NDF about being partners to potentially incorporate some of the private lands in there based on availability of homeowners wanting to get onboard with the State of Nevada with that. So we anticipate that to be a DNA determination, NEPA adequacy, but there's more ID teamwork to be done and more planning to be done before any kind of final decisions made on on the appropriate level of NEPA, but we're anticipating a DNA for it, which would allow a pretty rapid planning process and potentially even implementation on that project during the fiscal year twenty-two. In other news, we got two little pieces here. So our engine transfers are still on on track. But for, we have not received our replacement engines to allow those three engines to go to our cooperating agencies. Love Lock VFD is one of the agencies slated to receive one of our Type Four engines. As you're aware, we were able to complete a transfer a few years back to Rythatch for excess equipment. So as soon as we're able to get our hands on our new equipment, we'll because we're still staffing those trucks right now, we'll be able to prepare those with inventory, their final checks and everything, and then get them turned over to Love Lock in this case. The other two engines, one slated to go to Denial, the other one to Golconda. So we're still hoping that's gonna happen soon, but that one's out of our hands until we get our our new equipment here. And the final piece is a facilities piece, our airbase in Winamaka, expecting a large overhaul of our retardant plant and kind of bringing that whole operation into perfect environmental compliance where it can be permitted by NDEP, and then cleaning up our old footprint from the previous twenty years and remedying all of that for the city of Winamaka here. And they're a big partner in that project as their engineers are in cahoots with our engineers and their construction company that's already doing work at the airport there is likely gonna be doing a lot of the paper and work and and non-retardant facility type of work out on the airport. So it's in lockstep with that airport authority there. That's pretty much all I have unless you have any questions.
Donovan, I have one. Grass Valley Fire Department is in desperate need for a fire brush truck. Can you help us out in any way?
So there, we do have two additional trucks that we've placed orders for. Again, this is life cycling our our fleet out. So there will be another round of of submissions from the various chiefs on what their needs are. When we ended the last chief's meeting, which was in May this year, there were no additional requests at that time. So if this is a new request, it would, it would definitely be a candidate for one of the other trucks that we would be getting replaced.
So how do we, how do we make that request?
Your chief will do that through our real fire coordinator, Eric Nolan, and he can go direct to him. And we have the form for that. They'll fill that out with what the need is and basically be able to get that in line. As far as Nevada BLM is concerned, when local districts have excess equipment, they'd like to see that equipment go to the local district first before it's made available. And by local district, I mean our cooperators within our district boundaries before it's made available to other cooperators throughout the state. So it would be very important for that information to get communicated to Eric soon from the chief. And we can get that in line because right now I know of no other requests.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that's this year's rounds that we're putting forth for replacement, correct? Because the ones that are still on pending are last year.
Yeah, those are spoken for, but we did orders, I want to say, back in February for our new equipment.
And that was two.
I, you know, I I hope it's not a three-year build time like this last round was because that COVID was involved. There was a new contract that was being let at the National Office for building our apparatus with new safety equipment. All that's been awarded now, so we have the contractors. So hopefully that that will be on a normal build schedule, which is about eighteen months. So that's the best news I have for that. The other option, if it's an immediate need, is the same contact with Eric Nolan, my real fire coordinator, can put Grass Valley in touch with NDF, and NDF's been able to move some of their excess equipment here recently. I think they were able to get an engine up to McDermott who had a truck burned down earlier in the season, and they were able to help them with that. So that's another avenue, just not a federal avenue. That's a state avenue.
Okay, great. We'll get with Eric and see what he can do to help. Thank you.
And I'll give him a heads up that folks will be reaching out to him.
Yeah, theirs is, theirs is totally down, so we are desperate at this point.
Okay. And that's their Type Three engine? Do you know?
It's a brush truck. I don't know what.
Sim- similar to what we, you know, what you donated last year to write that.
Okay, that's, that's their big truck. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't know what one piece of equipment looks like versus another. So, yeah.
Okay, so that's pretty much the report out from BLM Winamaka. Are there any other questions you guys have for us?
Oh, yeah, I've got one. I've got a couple, Esther. Okay, we have these semi informal events that are happening out at the Blackrock Desert. And because they aren't officially organized by one group, we cannot use our festival ordinance. We can't, we can't get any revenue or replacement for our costs for fire, for, well, fire services or ambulance services for sheriffs. Is there any way around this? I mean, we know it's organized because they're all coming and it's on Facebook and and email and everything, but there is no official group.
You know, and because we are not issuing any special recreation permits, I mean, we, we it is, it is definitely an unsanctioned gathering. We have not authorized it. They're all supposed to be self-sufficient, self-reliant. And and I understand we're going through the same kind of concerns and issues too with what we deal with this group, but we can certainly go back and look and see if there's any ways and talk to our State Office about that to figure out if there's a way to access those festival ordinances.
Yeah, because we have, you know, monetarily, it's impacting our county. And I know it impacts you as well, but I can see this happening more and more. You know, we've got the Fourth of July, we've got the, what, Oktoberfest, whatever you called it.
October.
October.
Yes.
July, sorry.
No, it's fine.
And then now we have this one. I just see it becoming an easy way to circumvent you know, the festival ordinances and and BLM's requirements to sanction events too.
Okay, yeah, we will go back and see if there's anything we can do. I mean, we talked about making, you know, organized groups get get special recreation permits this year. But it was, as you know, with Burning Man canceling, it was I guess, kind of late in the year for applications for special recreation permits and we didn't really have one.
Maybe that's the way, though, if you issued, if you required special recreation permits for, you know, whatever is happening, then maybe we would be able to piggyback on that. I'd have to ask our DA, but you know, we need to get some sort of reimbursement and assistance to our law enforcement and our emergency services and stuff.
Okay, we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
No problem.
And Jerry. Do you want to come up here so that she can?
Can you hear Jerry?
Would you please, Jerry? Jerry Allen is here in the audience, and he's gonna make a comment.
Hi, Jerry.
I'm making him come to the mic.
The only comment I was gonna make is that for the last two years when we, Burning Man project is officially backed away from the festival, we have had some good agreements with BLM, at least for the the non-festivals to get some reimbursement for that. This is the first one here, the October play, so I'm not sure what that's all gonna entail. We have worked together as well with BLM for reimbursement for Port of the Play as well. So we do.
Oh, you do get some.
Get some money back from that.
Okay, good.
However, the the county just doesn't, I mean, that it's public use land and that kind of stuff, it opens to the public. There's so many ways to get out there without coming through the county, the county proper here. So there's people go out there and do that, but we do have some good relationships with BLM. We have worked it out. We may be able to do that as well with October play, but like I said, today's the first day. Event that may happen out there.
Thank you.
And Jerry, last year was the first time I heard Octoplia, and it was a Halloween kind of OHV event out there, I think, is what they were doing. But it was it was one we saw on social media that we picked up on. It was not as big as obviously Fourth of July or this or, but we do agree with you that we, we think this is going to pick up and as people realize they don't. As people realize they don't have to go to Burning Man, that there are other options throughout the. Entire year. When the playa dries out. And yes, Carol, what we were, what we've been doing is we contract with Persian County Sheriff for coverage out there. They help us. With our. Patrolling and law enforcement activities. So it's we we actually contract with with Jerry's office.
Oh, great. I wasn't particularly aware of that, but I do know that you have a number of meetings with. Jerry and everyone else and, you know, you you work so well with our county and we really do appreciate that. Very much.
We appreciate it too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Esther.
Did you have any question?
I didn't have any.
Esther, thank you very much. And thank you for Unionville Cemetery.
We are excited that that's gonna finally, finally be all closed out and no reverter clause. That that's the one we're really looking forward to. At least you already have the title now, but that reverb clause will go off and that. That's, that's something that we're very, very happy to have seen happen.
I've been working on it for ten and a half years solid, and then other people have been working on it prior to that as well. So thank you very, very much.
You're welcome and we're we're happy to get it done.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to say one other one other thing while while Esther's on the line. Sorry, congested today. I'm not saying in front of the sheriff. So so there have been several issues pertaining to illegal grazing in the Grass Valley area. And BOM has been very helpful in limiting. Those incidents and then curtailing that and issuing citations. And I've talked to several residents in Grass Valley who were very appreciative of BLM's efforts in that area. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
People, it's been really helpful to cut down on some of the. Escalation and some of the tension that exists up there.
I can, I can tell you have the correct phrasing, that that legal background of saying it carefully.
He's very good at that.
Yes, I I appreciate that. And yes, it's nice. We're trying to make sure that that. Tension is reduced and and Kathleen is still in here and it's her, her staff and our law enforcement that has been. Working that. So I think. Kathleen can pass that on to her staff. So.
I I will, you know, it's just a bit difficult with that area being checkerboard. You know, that inter intermingling of private and public lands, we can only cite them when we find them on public. You have to be there at just the right time. But but yeah, we have at least issued one trespass and a lot of warning letters, so. Trying to stay on top of it.
Well, thank you. Keep up the good work.
So thank you, Esther and Andy and Kathleen and Donovan, very much for your reports. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. So we'll see you later. Thanks.
Okay, we've been jumping around so much. I'm gonna jump to number thirteen cloud seeding. We have on the agenda approval to participate in a cloud seeding program for a cost of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. From the Persian County.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. How are you?
My name is Billy Hodges, and I'm here representing the Humboldt River Facing Water Authority. And I'm here to seek assistance from Persian County for cloud seeding in five sites. In the Ruby Mountains, the headwaters of the Humboldt River. And two sites in the Sonoma Mountains, north of Winnebago. To give you a little bit of a background. This cloud seeding program total cost would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the William Pennington Foundation has volunteered to contribute sixty thousand dollars of that. So Jeff Fontaine, Director of the HRBWA and myself. And some of the county members, the other counties, the five counties on the river. Are proposing the five counties each kick in thirty-five hundred dollars for this cloud seeding program. And when I got to thinking about it and talking about it. I thought, my thought was, why don't we get the water district to kick in half of that? And the county behalf of that, lessen that. Burden a little bit. If we can pull this off. That's really cheap, but it's really an inexpensive attempt to create. To get some help in this disaster situation we're in. Several years ago, many years ago. We we tried to do the same thing countywide. But then we didn't have any assistance or grants or anything. So let me back up a little bit. And the minds was anticipated to kick in some money to. But the county's portion being thirty-five hundred dollars. Several years ago, we looked at doing this. And the county's portion is gonna be like, I can't remember. It was a lot. It was like six thousand, ten thousand dollars in. You know, we just, they couldn't afford, they couldn't do that and couldn't get it to work. But I just think this is a real opportunity to try to. Do something to get this trap turned around. Historically, and and a lot of people don't realize this, and I don't know. Up until maybe. Fifteen years, twenty years ago. That's recent issue to be to cloud seed annually. And the cost just got too expensive. But the infrastructure, their machines and all this stuff. And the technology they have and the infrastructure to do this is still in place. So I was just proposing again that the county's cost would be thirty-five hundred dollars to be split with the Persian County Water District. And I talked to. Manager Ryan Collins and Chairman, Board Chairman Ronnie Burrows, and they thought, yeah, that would be a great idea. So whereas the county would kick in seventeen hundred and fifty dollars and the water district would kick in seventeen hundred and fifty dollars.
I think it's a great idea and it's a great progress.
So Rain, do we have money somewhere? It's somewhere in the general government part or what? Humboldt River Water Basin. Basically, if we get water out of the cloud seeding, at least our producers in the valley get water. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with seventeen hundred and fifty dollars to contribute to cloud seeding. And and thank the Persian County Water Conservation District for contributing the other half.
Thank you to the commissioner. We appreciate this.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Yes, sir.
I apologize, cat and chicken, what they hatch, so. Again, thank you. As this moves forward. And we see how it goes, should I work with Karen as a contact person on this or who should I report?
Sure, with Karen.
I'll be in touch, okay? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, Lacy, do you have anything? Thank you. Lori, I know you've been waiting or you're there, but Rain. You haven't seen that?
The only thing I have is business as usual and busy as usual. We've been really busy recording annually. And then one comment, Carol, just so you know, if you look on your monthly reports under the law enforcement. There is a line item for BLM reverse reimbursement and an expense line for BLM expenses.
Okay.
And so last year's event were pretty well reimbursed for our expenses.
Okay, great. Thank you. I wasn't aware of it. I didn't notice it, but I'm glad we're getting something. I know you do.
I know you do. Lori, come on up.
Good morning. How are you? I just have the one agenda item. And Bryce, thank you for helping with.
Of course.
Preamping the contract, etc. Have you all had an opportunity to?
Yeah, that's small print. Oh, I don't, I, my computer is sleeping. What is the dollar amount?
It is seven thousand dollars, which was approved under. Taxual preparation.
And that's to send out your.
Assessment notices, which is awesome. Yes, it's been, it's been a challenge. You know, we've always hand touched them and last year when there was just two and a half of us remaining. It was, it really came to light what a process it is.
I think it's a more efficient use of your.
And envelopes and postage and cutting checks and. I've talked to a couple of the other assessors that are using them and they said they make the process very easy. So I don't even know that it will cost the seven thousand, but.
So, Mr. DA, you reviewed the contract and it's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the contract with OSG, not to exceed seven thousand.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
So what's happening in the area? Well, I'm right along with Lacy on corrections and actually somewhat behind because of, we've had some unsecured, which is the personal property. Bugs in our system. So I'm hoping to get caught up and not impact her all at once. Of course, it's time for business property declarations again. We just, you know, build everybody in April. Due to the staff shortage, normally we can usually have those done in a couple of months, but it just seems like that is on us again. Morgan's working on her appraisal cycle via the imagery. We're hoping that the air quality will improve so that we can get out in the field. And get some new construction. Since I'm her assistant and I have asthma pretty profoundly, it's not real. Cause if I need to get out there and. Maybe have an asthma attack on her. So we're hoping that we can get out and pick up some new construction.
It's not gonna happen for.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Until we have a either a large rain or snow or something.
We had half of our flight delivered. The other half they're they're hoping to get to if. Out in Jersey and Dixie and Buffalo Valley, if their quality improves. I'm not sure that will happen either. That's pretty much it. Just work as normal.
So just work as normal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bryce, do you have anything?
I do not, but we do need a litigation.
We're almost there. Jeremy Allen.
I don't have much to update for, because I have to be updated on pretty much everything as well. Burning Man, the only thing I have is I just had a retirement tender to me yesterday, which is gonna open up another spot. So obviously I didn't have time to bring it before the board. But I'm down to fifty percent of my staff right now. So we are filling positions, myself, Mayor Sheriff. On the next commission meeting, I'm gonna put that as an item. We need to figure out something. As I said before, we had our advertisement out for one. We got no responses. This last week, we did get one potential. However, as a standard practice, we usually wash fifty percent of those out in the background. So. Fifty percent of one is gonna be not much. So hopefully that that candidate will make it, but I'll still be too many positions now. We are, we are over, we are past the burnout phase for my, especially my sworn staff. But they're dedicated to the community. They're they're pulling extra shifts as well. So.
So what suggestion do you have?
The same suggestion I came with the budget time is we we need to, we need to provide some kind of incentive.
Okay.
To try and get applicants.
All right, so we're gonna have workshops and that's one of the things we need to talk about. And then I have a question. I noticed that the law enforcement. Update for the law enforcement center is not on the agenda. And was there, was there a. A design by the engineers at some point for a two-story complex in the property that we have?
This two-story would not fit those lots over there. We had the lot over here and we had the design for that. And of course, that all went out the window.
When we have one of our workshops, I would like to talk about the law enforcement center. Because there was a quote in the paper that the two other commissioners were not interested any longer. In the law enforcement center, I can only speak for this commissioner, and that's not true. This commissioner.
Didn't read that, so.
This commissioner. Has no issue with the law enforcement center. And the issue I have is finding the revenue to pay for the law enforcement center.
Right, and that's always gonna be a concern.
Correct. So it was kind of misleading in the paper.
And I haven't read the paper, so and I have not been approached about about that recently.
But that's something that I would like us to discuss too on our workshops that we have, so that we can get some concrete stuff going.
So our next item is Derby Field Airport. And the only thing that's happened out there is we did have, in our last meeting, we approved the scope of work. And the agreement for Far West. We have now signed up. The DA is. Reviewed and approved. So we're on the way for for doing that. Number twelve, approval of CDBG.
Wait, 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 wait. There's an agenda item.
Where?
Jerry Fray.
Oh, I forgot that. Request to utilize county water faucet and reimburse. Hostile water for Jerry Fray. I think that's kind of a mute point now since the spraying was done last week.
But is he going to reimburse the cost of the water?
I I think I would like to make a comment. I think when Lacy gets the monthly bill, we'll compare it back to a previous bill. And I will do glad to send Mr. Fray.
Sure. If there's an increase from from the month. Yeah.
And the money not, because the Derby Field is normally pretty same, right?
Great. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we do bill Fray. For the water usage based on the calculate, best calculations that we can do.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And I also have another question.
Incidentally, the the water faucets out there are really the only two are at the new. Yeah, but I asked Myron and he said he didn't see them using any water off of there. So they did use. Yeah, okay.
So I have a question. Is there someone else that uses the airport water?
There is another one, but he uses water from a private hangar and he reimburses them.
It's not from our. And then the the last question I have is the airport hangar agreement. I still haven't seen it. Where are we on that? Well, the last I recall, the airport board was gonna be finally approve it and forward it to the DA and the DA, then it would be put on our agenda.
It's ready to go.
Well, then let's get it on the agenda.
Well, it's gotta be approved by the airport.
Well, then let's get it on the airport board agenda. But this is the same answer I get every time I ask.
I will make a note to get it put on the next airport board meeting for renovation.
And then I think Shayla had a question about the DA.
I will ask later.
What's that?
She said she said she'd ask later.
Number twelve approval of CDVG grant application for Emily Water System Upgrade.
This is something we really should discuss when James is here.
James is here.
Oh, sorry. I thought he left. Hey, James. Could we borrow you?
I have questions. Who applied for this? Who's gonna administer this?
Well, that's just it. You know, I have brought it up as something that we could possibly apply for. So I think it was put on the agenda for us to discuss this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then, yeah, who's gonna do the application and who's gonna do the administering of the grant and everything? The Emily Water System, their C D B G possibility of a grant, but we'd have to apply. Administer it and everything. And it doesn't mean that you get it. You should, you apply. So is that something that you could handle your office with the assistance of our administrative clerk?
No, I'm not, not the administrative of the C, of a C D G. Those, those things are a lot of work. I, I honestly, I just don't have time to, to administer the C D B G grant.
Do we have any idea what's needed out of the Emily Water System? Do we need new, new water lines? Do we need new meters? I know we need a tank.
It, it would have, you would have to hire somebody to. To do a, basically to do an analysis of the system. To determine, exactly tell you, yeah, we need, we need new meters, we need, we need new mains, we need new, well, we do need a tank. It's a matter of, of need versus want.
So the other question I have is, I believe C D B G grant money can be used for planning. So. Could we hire like Far West to do an analysis of the water system and possibly expanding it for economic development? No, I mean, you're the C D B G expert. No, but I mean, the way it can be used.
With their process, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is there, do you know what the deadline is for that application? Okay, all right. I'll do some additional research. So is it before our next meeting?
Along the lines of expansion, if, if the intent was to, to add line or anything like that. It, it's gonna be sometime before we're able to get, even get our hands on, on new lines.
Oh, the piping, I know. Yeah, it's not available.
Yeah, well, like Bryce told you guys at the last meeting, it's.
Yeah.
And a lot of those things, they have to be, they have to be project ready. And I don't know if we're even close to that. So I don't know if we'll put in the cart before the horse or.
But what I'm thinking is maybe we could apply for, to hire and, and it, you know, like someone like Far West to do an analysis and then do a design.
And you guys would have to have some kind of idea for, for expansion on, on how far you want to expand and, and what that's going to entail. Cause if you, if you get bigger. The system, the system is going to get to a point to where.
It will.
Where one or wells won't handle it or tanks won't handle it. And the county won't be able to handle it. They're going to have to, you would have to. Basically have to turn into something like a, the water district. It would need to be something to that effect. Because once you reach a certain threshold. Then certifications go up and, and the requirements to operate a larger system increases.
And if so, if we start, if there was some development in that area, new housing, mobile homes, you know, whatever, is it by well? Is that what they do?
Yeah. And typically there isn't, there really isn't, or hasn't been anything inside the Emily area that. That people have been wanting. There, there's, there's been a, there's been a couple, but those folks have been able to hook into our system.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's still required, the same process would be. Some, some engineer has Far West, but somebody would need to. Need to determine how that transition is going to happen. Cause we only have one tank. And. How? When that tank goes down, I mean, it's, it, it would be a, it would be a process, but I mean, that's not even something close to me.
And we had talked about when we put the new tank in, we just keep the other one as a backup. Just in case.
Yeah, but yeah, there'd be a, there'd be a lot of work.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then could we go back to?
We have our litigation meeting while the sheriff is here.
Oh, yeah. I just have one question.
Excuse me.
Really quick.
Judge, did you come back for a reason? Okay.
I, I wanted to go back to number eleven E and just say, is it possible? Mr. DA, even though it's not on the agenda, that the boy could direct the planning. And, and building and planning director to communicate in letter form and writing when an application is denied.
That's our, that's our.
Okay, that's great. That's all I wanted to know.
Yep, that is, that is a mistake already.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, number fifteen, which is update on number two and related. We have a, a list of proposed projects, which we haven't really altered that. We received. Some funding.
We received half, six.
What I was trying to do in last, our last session, when we were talking about the water main for Derby Field. I was trying to get that money dedicated for that project. And I would still like to do that. So when the time comes, we can proceed.
I would like to wait and see if, on the Derby Field water, if the state comes through on the funding for the infrastructure.
Or for the federal government.
On the government, yes. The federal government and saves the money that we have received for.
Well, and I can't find what I'm looking for right now.
So, so my, my concern there is, you know, we have this pot of money and we have this day. Money and, and possible federal. What if we don't get those two? Then we still come back here and if we've already spent that, then we're.
Well. I would rather. See what kind of infrastructure money we get. The six point, how many billion the state has? That we've all, we've talked to the treasurer. We've all submitted our ideas.
Lauren, could I borrow this for a second?
And.
Would that be okay?
And that's what. I would rather see those projects come out of and you, and save pretty much the cash we have on hand. For other needs.
So where Reen and I worked on an interim. Report that had to be done for these recovery plan funds. It was due August thirty first, which was yesterday. And then we found that actually our due date is sixty days past when we received the money. So even though it's done and Lacy's, did you get it filed? Or she's, she's working on getting it filed because there were glitches in the program, but we're okay deadline wise. But when Reen and I were working on this, there is so much involved and what we need to be doing as a county before we allocate these funds. And there's, we need to have public hearings. It's not just a matter like the CARES Act where we made a list. We got approval from the state at that point, the state treasury finance office. Because they wanted to make sure that they, it was in compliance, which we got that approval. But this is a whole nother set of things and it's huge. And the reporting on it, this is a lot of work. This was easy because we hadn't done anything yet. And because we hadn't spent any money yet. By that date. But there are goals and aware, we have to make the public aware, we have to have meetings and workshops regarding all of this. And it's not something that we can just go and allocate. And I agree with Shayla. I don't have a problem with us, and we already approved it going forward with Far West doing the, the engineering, the design, whatever has to be done. That makes it shovel ready for whatever funds come through. But I don't wanna use all of this money. That we're getting from the, the rescue plan. Plus, the rescue plan isn't just for one year, it's for several years. So this doesn't have, a decision does not have to be made now. A decision on how we spend that money, we can take six months or longer, however we wanna do it, as long as we're doing the, the correct process. And I would like to wait to see, like, like you said, Commissioner Hudson. We've got possible state funding and I did talk to Naco. And Naco is gonna spearhead getting the counties together and so we can possibly group some of the projects. That are of interest so that we have like interests and we can say to the state, this is what our counties need. And so they're gonna be spearheading some of that. But. We're not, you know, we're not allocating anything, but we're not at, we're not, not allocating it either. But we need to do more than just say to ourselves, oh, this is how we're gonna spend the money. And so that brings up, you know, who's going to be doing this? Who's gonna be doing the reports? Who's going to be making sure that we are in compliance with what we have to do for the federal government? We do not have a county manager and, you know, we don't even have a planner. But we need somebody with some expertise to be doing this. Or it's gonna be Reed and I, which we will do what we can, or it'll be one of the commissioners, or it'll be Karen. But we need to talk about how we're gonna become in compliance and spend that money. The other issue is when we did the report, it also shows that based on the formula that we were given by National Naco. We have, we can show where we lost revenue in the amount of eight hundred thousand. Technically, we could use that eight hundred thousand for things other than the American Rescue Plan. But I don't know enough yet right now to tell you exactly what we have to do to do that. But the, the original thing was if we had revenue loss that we could show of X number of dollars. We could use it to shore up our budget or do programs and, and things that we were not able to do because we didn't have the revenue. So we need to have so, at least one, if not two, sit down communications where we take it step by step by step. Look at what we're required to do and figure out how we're gonna do it. And whether we're gonna hire somebody with that loss of revenue money to help us be in compliance. Hire them, you know, however we're gonna do it. But. We limp along all the time with different projects and things that come up. And it's getting harder and harder. It's, it's not an easy, an easy thing. I'm grateful that we were able to do the CARES funding without too much of a problem. And it took, you know, I did it, Reed did it, and we made sure that we stayed in compliance. But at the same time, this is even bigger than that. The federal government didn't hand us the money and say, go for it. They handed us the money with all these stipulations and processes that we have to go through. And I'm not sure what the city's doing. But I, I don't know if they're bound by the same thing, but I would guess that they are. And, you know, we really need to talk about how we're going to stay in compliance with the salmon farm, for instance, who's going to be doing all this. Permitting and everything else. And we've got negotiations that go on with companies like that, that, you know, it's, it's over our heads. You know, we do a pretty darn good job and we've managed so far, but I don't know that we can continue to operate behind the scenes. We've had a couple of instances that's happened this past year that. I personally feel would not have gotten to the extent that they were if we had somebody that had the authority to take care of them. Other than a commissioner. And commissioners can't do it all. And we each have our own expertise. And I mean, there's some things I'm good at and some things, a lot of things I'm not. You know, anyway, that's, I, I think we're too soon on that. I think we need to have. A workshop or two, and that's why I'm hoping we can set some workshop dates for some of these issues. That we, we need to talk to about the American Rescue Plan. I don't have anything against the water to the airport. But I, I need a better idea of what the costs are. And also too, that's what Far West will be doing. And we'll get a better idea. And I would like to go after whatever funding we can get. Same with broadband and, and anything else. Grass Valley Road. Right. And any of those things that we need to do. If we can get funding from another source and leave this open. And like I said, we don't have to spend this money for several years.
Right.
I mean, I'll be long out of office before the deadline for actually spending it. And I think the deadline is that you only have to commit that that's what you're gonna be doing. So anyway, sorry.
So the other part of that is promotion of the, the request for, from China Springs Youth Camp, Minne, Nevada. For funding for six thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars and thirty three cents from Virgin County A R A Fund. I think you just spoke to that. I mean, I can't say that I agree with this anyway. We already have a county tax that puts in. Eleven thousand, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty eight dollars. And the state doesn't help us in any way. So I can't, I can't see extra funding.
Well, I know they're asking for that from every county. And that's how they want to fund the shortfall.
Yeah.
That the legislature didn't fund China Springs.
That's the legislature.
Why is every county responsible for funding what the legislature should be funding?
Exactly. So to me, we should not be doing that.
But what? Do we, do we send a lot of Persian County youth to China Springs?
No, we don't.
When we have, for the sheriff in here, but when we have juvenile issues, and Bryce can speak to this more, but. They go to Churchill County. They used to go to Humboldt County. Now they go to Churchill County where we have a contract.
Find a contract with Alco County, correct?
Yes.
As a backup.
Um, Dan Baldini has been sitting on this workshop. It's a phone. And when I was listening in, the one time he mentioned that the last person that we sent their youth was several years ago. But it's good to have that option. And I, I do support China Springs. But I also don't know if we can use that allocation at this point for that. Cause we haven't talked about it or.
I say no.
Do we have to make a decision then?
Yes, it's on the agenda to do that.
No, I know, but.
Well, just because something is on the agenda doesn't mean that a decision has to be made.
Well, what I'm thinking is it's too early for us to say because we haven't gone through the process.
Well, I think that Larry could make a motion to deny it. And then the board could vote on it, or someone could make a counter motion to to make the decision after additional meetings are conducted to determine how those funds are going to be spent. There's a lot of different ways the board could handle that.
So I will make that motion that we wait until we review how we're going to be spending these funds. So that we can look at this item.
I will second.
Okay, have the motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again. Why not? Another two to one though.
Well, it doesn't mean that we're in favor of it. It just means we're, yeah, to address it.
Because if we look at it and we haven't sent an individual to China Springs in years, then why are we? We are already paying them, so we still have to look at the area. We, I want to look and see at the other possibilities before I vote, yeah, your name.
Okay, the next is the topic of masks. I guess there's another directive coming out this Friday. From, from the state, of course, from the governor's office, actually from the CDC. And it's, it's not mandated, it's recommendations.
I thought it said it was mandated.
It's a mandate.
It's a mandate.
Well, it's, there's certain words in that that I don't take as a mandate. I mean, you're, you're the lawyer, if you think it is.
The CDC makes recommendations at the stage that's adopted the directive.
Yeah.
It's going to follow the recommendations of the CDC and adopt those as a mandate. But I can understand why some people would interpret it that way.
Yeah, that's the way I am.
But it's, it's clear to me that it's a mandate. And the latest directive came down Tuesday. Because Persian County is in a high risk or substantial risk area. And it has been, the CDC is recommending that vaccinated or vaccinated people, really regardless of your vaccinated status. If you're in a public setting, then you wear a mask. Public indoor setting. That you, that people wear a mask.
So the governor gave authority to the counties to make their own decisions.
Make that, make it more restrictive, not make it something their own decisions. They can make it more restrictive than what the current directive is.
He took, he said that he was turning over to the counties.
Except for the mask mandates.
Oh, except for the masks. Oh, shit, okay. And I believe White Pine has said.
They said, yeah.
They told them that we're going to do that.
Elko has also.
And he's declared another emergency.
We have one active case as of our website in Persian County. How is that high risk?
Exactly.
Are you directing those questions to me as legal counsel?
That's because she's looking right at you. How is one case in our county high risk? And how is that determined by the CDC, who has no clue what this county is?
Right. And now we've gone from high back down.
Yeah. So now, why do we have to do this, this, keep doing the bullshit mandates? When everybody can make a choice.
So, so that's not kind of where I'm going. I don't think the county needs to mandate masks. When this is coming from the CDC, not us. That's why I put it on here so we could discuss it. I just, I don't see the county saying, okay, everybody has to wear a mask.
Well, I will make a motion. That the mask requirement is up to the individual or the businesses. And that's up to what they decide, not the county.
Yes. You not seconding that?
No, 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 I just have a question for legal counsel first. What does that do?
What does it do?
Yeah, I mean, cause I'm, I want to second it and say it's up to each person. It's none of our, it's not for us to enforce. The governor's made the mandate. And if people choose to do it or not, that's.
So the only authority that the governor has to give it counts is whether they want. As it pertains to a mask mandate, it's whether the county wants to restrict it, the county can have it. So it's restricted.
So we're not.
Fisher Hudson's motion is less restrictive than the directive. You know, this board can adopt it, but as far as having it, it was in fact, of the deck round four. If the governor has a, has a mandate and the county says no, we're going to do something contrary to it. We're, we're a political subdivision of the state of Nevada. The county commission derives this authority from the state of Nevada. And therefore the, the political subdivision doesn't have the authority to conquer being the entity that gave it its authority. So as I've explained many times before, it'll just be a form of political protest.
It's so, okay, and, and we can, and if we can do that, I second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, let me, I want to, I have a comment on this.
Now he comes with the.
I did not.
This is what? So the governor's mandate is out there. I just don't want people in the community and business owners to be confused that there is no mandate. As the governor has said, yes, when you're in public and you're indoors, you need to wear a mask.
It's up to the individual.
And our public health director also said.
Correct. And Lacy is, Lacy's right, right. That's what the public health director said.
What, that it's up to each individual? Oh, okay.
Right. So if business owners are under the impression that this mandate doesn't exist. And they're not requiring it, OSHA could come and they could, they could face consequences on a state level. And OSHA does not necessarily have to be backed up by the district attorney's office, the attorney general's office. So I just, I would just caution the board in, in making those decisions. Because I think it sows confusion among the community. And maybe sets people up for some health, health risks that you know, are present.
Do you, there's always a risk.
Sure.
Walking outside every day is a risk. But at one point in time.
I'm not, I'm not debating, all right? And I'm not turning it into a debate. I'm just telling you what the directive, what the governor's directive was.
I can't agree with the government's, government, governments directives anymore because they've lied to us so much. They have taken away individual liberties and freedoms.
Okay, so we, if we can go and recess, we have a, a one o'clock. We can at least go find a little something to eat, then we can continue with our one o'clock. And then finish up the agenda.
We'll call this meeting back into session. We have a one o'clock, which is an interview of applicants for the senior center director. So first one off is tell us about yourself and your work background.
So I will first tell you about my work background. It's a lot of admin where I started off first just um kind of right after high school went into the core and then after that it was an auto auction was which was like very fast paced for me, but I liked it because it like kept me on my toes. And it's mostly been admin, like I know how to do all of the office basic stuff and I think as we move forward, there's new programs that come up like before I remember it was a lot of the email, the hotmail, which now does not exist. Now it's a lot of Word, Excel, Microsoft Word, the Outlook 365. So last year I got used to a lot of that stuff just because of my past job. And honestly, when it comes to work, I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty, like whatever is available. And if I like it, I'll do it. It's for me, there's not just one job I want to focus on or I just want to pursue. It always kind of has to do with the area we live because my husband is a cowboy. So we used to move a lot. So I can hear from cooking, babysitting, counseling, all of it. And a little about myself, we've been here for about close to three years. Um, I like Lovelock. It's not too big and it's not too small. Like I said in the interview so far, I think every day I see someone new. In this town, I don't, I like to stay in my cave. I don't like to like, um, I like, you know, staying home with my boys whenever I can and just be in that family um environment, but obviously, you know, because we do have to work like I'm ready to get out there and like I want something more.
Yes, good job.
Pushing myself to something more. And I, I don't know if you guys have ever felt this way, but even like your mind and your body sometimes tells you like you need something more. There's more out there than to just this.
So that we take turns like you're familiar with. So what is your interest in the senior center director position? And why do you feel you would be the most qualified for the position?
So I was first interested in the position because it is helping the seniors. Lovelock does have a lot of seniors and I think the more I got involved with the senior center, I could see like the need for the seniors. Cause I think a lot of times we like don't think about seniors and how hard sometimes they have it, but riding along with Larry and like getting the meals prepared. It, um, a lot of these people are in need, even that like Larry says, you know, that knock on their door is they, it could be the, you could be the only person they're going to see the, their entirety. And you should be delivering that meal that they're only going to eat that one day. Cause a lot of them, you know, are picky and a lot of them don't have the energy to make their meals anymore. It's so they rely a lot on the senior center to get them that meal. So I think though the more I've been involved, the more I'm liking it and liking the interaction with the seniors. Yeah, you're gonna have your crabby ones, you know, but you have to know how to talk to them for, to get them to relax or just to leave that little window that, you know, you're a good person, you're gonna invade or anything, you try to poison them. But that's what I've liked so far, just the involvement with the seniors. And like I said in my past job, I had already gotten to know half of them, but of course every time you know, they would have inbound, it was like a different person showing up. So that's, that's what I liked about. That's what pushed me to apply for the director position. And then um, I feel like I'm qualified because I already know what happens in the kitchen and you know, with the seniors coming in and out and the delivery, of course, you're going to learn stuff every day that you're there. And I feel like my strong is my strongest, I want to say, um, qualification is the being bilingual. There's a lot of seniors that they do know how to communicate in English, but I don't know if you have noticed that we communicate a lot with our hands. So even last week we had a senior and Larry was like trying to figure it out, like looking at him. And I just walked out because I don't even know why I walked out for it, but he was like, Giselle, can you help me? Like I'm trying to explain to him. So I'm like, okay, I know what you're talking about. I mean, he didn't like my response, but you know, I told him.
But he understood.
Yeah, he understood that we couldn't um put more people on the list until we got everything kind of situated at the senior center. And I told them, I was like, you're more than welcome, you know, to come back, but for now, because we don't know, we kind of have it limited. And he was like, okay, perfect. And
Well, did you take his name and everything for a list?
Yeah.
We have, we have his name.
Yeah, he's one of those that like
Okay.
Oh, yes.
You kind of have to know how to deal with him and
Yes.
For me, it's like, I'll just give you your way, but either way you kind of have to wait. Like there's nothing else to do. And I'm for some reason, I'm, I'm not the, I don't feel I have that, um, there's a lot of people that get irritated with them or like, like to fight back with them. I'm just like very mellow, like this is what's going on. You know, you kind of have to leave that door open for them to let them know that, you know, you're always there to help them, but you can't let them stomp all over you. Because if, if you let them, they will, they, they're like sorry to say this, but they're kind of like little kids, like you have to know your limits with them and how to communicate.
This next question is kind of probably already gone over.
We already know. Well, I still ask it though. Have you ever been to the senior center to serve?
You will catch me there from eight to one every day.
Since one of the most important functions of the senior center is the meal service. If selected, what steps would you take to be ready to step in? Uh, if either one of the cooks were not there?
If we've, um, we've come up every week with a menu. Of course, we have to follow the state menu and we try to incorporate as much as we can. But I think right now, um, with the people that have been helping at the senior center and the new employees, we've gotten in that routine to meal prep as much as we can. If we have, once we're done sealing the meals for outbound, if we have time, we'll move on to the next meal of the next day. That way, if someone is absent or you know, someone comes down with the flu or whatever the situation is, I feel we I'm able to pull it off just by preparing ourselves, ourselves for the next day. And it's we've gotten in that routine where we get there and we clean as we go, we, you know, we just try to be prepared for anything that could happen. Cause at this point, sometimes we don't even know if the truck's going to show up. So we always have to make sure that you have that amount for this many people that are on the list and we've been pretty good so far. I mean, we've last, sometimes we'll come up with vegetables or dessert last minute and everything goes out at 10:30. So I, I feel confident in that, that we could pull it off.
Um, sorry. Did you ask that one, right?
Yep, so yours.
Yeah, I'm five. I'm five, right? Cause I, I was listening to not writing.
Oh, you're on, you're on. Yeah, you're right. You're on five.
So tell us about your supervisory experience and what is the most difficult part of being a supervisor?
The, I think the latest one I had was just the miscommunication. Like I try to communicate as much as I can with the only employee that works with me. Um, but I feel like sometimes the miscommunication like will throw it all, it'll like give me a left turn when I'm late. No, that's, that's not how it happened. That's not how, how, you know, it's working. I think right now that's my biggest concern, just the miscommunication where, um, I try to communicate a week before because obviously at the community center, everything's in the calendar. Um, if things change, they usually call me before, but usually the stuff that's in the calendar, it like, it runs through. But right now, right now I feel it's just the miscommunication of me trying to communicate with that person and another one butting in to make it a left turn or a conflict. But other than that, I, I try to communicate every day like this is what's going on or remind myself like you have to remind them because obviously we all have our lives and, you know, have other things going on, but I think that's been right now, the hard part for me, just trying to communicate.
Have you had any other supervisory experience besides the one at the community center?
Um, yeah, the, um, I was the manager for the Rapa Horech, the, the cookhouse. And I just had two, you could say employees under me and with them I worked pretty well. Everything was exactly the same every day and just Fridays we would do in our orders to go pick up the groceries or have groceries delivered.
Have you ever had to discipline someone or, you know, write them up or evaluate their performance or anything like that?
Yeah, it came, when it came to sanitation for the Rapa Horech, it was twice where I had to kind of put my foot down and say like, this is the way we have to sanitize because if the state comes and sees like, we'll get in trouble.
Are you comfortable with the difficult decisions when you have to tell somebody in a professional manner that, you know, they've got to do their work properly or they're coming in late or, you know, where you have to discipline them or just communicate with them that things aren't going well?
Is that question on here?
No, it's not, but it's under supervision and I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I will say you handled that well last week.
Oh, thank you.
I agree.
And I don't know about it, but that's okay. I don't need to know the details. Excuse me, where am I? Give us an example of how you would diffuse a situation with an unhappy client.
You kind of already did with the individual you had to interpret.
With him, he was just, so I'm just going to use that example. He's just used to getting his weight, like no matter what, he's going to get his weight. So with him, because I already know how he works and what he tries to do, I just let him talk and talk and talk until it's my turn and I'll say, you know, I know how you feel, but you already know our circumstances, you know, where we stand. And this is what we could do to help you. If, um, if anything changes or if you need anything else, I always say like, give me a call or I'll give you a call to keep you updated on what's going on or if Larry decides to put you on the list, I'll let you know and I'll personally take you, you know, your food or whatever you need. I'll let you know and I'll personally take you, you know, your food or whatever you need.
Okay, what has been the highest pressure situation you've been under in recent years? And how did you cope with that?
The highest one. Was when I worked for the coalition, when I had to go to Winamaka to help the homeless. People out there and I'm pretty sure they call it, so in Humboldt County, the um. People whether they call it the river side. And there's a lot of um people just homeless and. Me personally, I know there's a lot of um issues with drugs and alcohol out there. But I was always, I'm always a person that's like, but why are they like that? Like, there has to be something wrong with their mental health for them to go to drugs or alcohol. Like, what are they trying to run from or what are they trying to not feel? I don't, and they were always pushed to, well, we need to get them in um, in a rehab center, in a rehab center. And I was always the one that was like, why feel we have to get them mental health help first in order to push them into. A rehab center. A lot of these people are veterans that have seen many things that hopefully we never see. A lot of them are people that have been abused, you know, so I, that was. Always a struggle with me. It was them kind of just trying to do a fast fixer-upper and I was more of the, but why? Why are they not wanting to feel or why are they running from certain situations?
Is it my turn again? Geez, I'm sorry. Can you tell? It's been a long day already. Have you ever applied for or managed any type of grant?
No, that's honest truth. That's I feel where I, that's like not my downfall because I'm. A fast learner, I catch on pretty fast, but I have never done the grant writing. I don't know what it consists of, but I am open to learning and pushing myself to see. That, that, that's one of the main things why I applied, just because of the grant, like. I've always heard it, grant writing, grant writing, even in like the last year for the meetings. Um, I was like, what's, like, what, what is that? But that's. The honestly, that's where I'm like, I have no clue how to grant write, but I know I could learn.
Explain the importance of compet- confidentiality in the workplace.
There is no questions. If it's confidential, it's confidential. When it comes to personal life, because you're gonna have those employees that do feel comfortable with you or sometimes they have to. Share things with you that they don't want to and there's, I feel there's no. If, buts or what, or say like, if it confidential, it's confidential. Nothing gets out, especially in this small town, like, like here.
Have you ever prepared a budget or managed one?
Yes. For the Arapahoe Ranch, the old cook was going into town almost twice a day. To get food, but half of the food was like pre-cooked versus me where it's home cooked. So it was down to, I wanna say. Sean, my old supervisor, he would say to keep the limit to three fifty a week. To spend on groceries for the cookhouse and we did, we kept it down just because of. All the home cooked meals and the ranch provided the beef, so we didn't, we never had to spend money on beef, just on vegetables. Snacks for the cowboy, they would come in and run out, so we kept, I kept it pretty low.
Um, suppose you submit your budget and one new item was cut out by the commissioners, but you still think it's important, what would you do? And to give you a little bit of background, you would prepare your budget and you, again, by that time, you're gonna have a better understanding of what a budget is. And um, but you'll prepare it and then the commissioners meet, we have workshops where we meet with each department. And we go over their budget with them. So let's say we meet with you and we decide that there's a new item in there. And we're questioning why you need it and you've got to make your, your point. So what would you do if it was important?
If it wasn't important, um, I would explain to you guys why it is important and. What meal, I guess it goes into, but I mean, ultimately, it's your guys' decision. If you guys want to take it off, you know, it's up to you guys. There's always something that could be replaced. That specific thing or whatever it is, we'll try to, I'll try to come up with something else and make it work. I mean, at the end of the day, you have to make it work, no matter what, you know, you have to feed the seniors.
Let me give you a couple of examples of that. We, uh, at the senior center, we, we needed uh. An air conditioner or actually say a condenser for the freezer replaced, not in our budget to do it. So I went to the state to obtain funds and luckily they approved and that's by doing another grant. And they did, which was fantastic. Another example is. Uh, you've heard of talk a little bit lately about painting the restrooms. She's actually over there today painting. And that isn't something that was in our budget, so I went out trying to get donations or people to do it. And we were successful in doing that. So do you have any questions of us?
No, just the only question is the grant writing. That's Larry keeps me in suspense with the grant. And that's just.
You're very teachable.
There are certain grants that we apply for at the senior center every year. And then you work with the state nutrition office or whatever and they, they can help with. How to write them too, but you, we've got, or there should be copies of previous grants from that particular thing and. And how to do them, so they're not quite that, that bad, I don't think, but then like Commissioner Rackley said. Uh, let's say you need something and there's no money out there anywhere, which that's our biggest problem where I don't have a lot of money. Is you have to be inventive and try to see what you can do if you really need it, so. I have a couple other questions, stability. How, you mentioned you've been here for three years. Are you guys pretty much here now or?
Yeah, yeah, or my, well, both of them started school this year. So I've always told my husband, once the boys start school, like, we're not moving anywhere. And he said, no, he has to say yes. If he has to say yes.
Well, you're, you're here and he's somewhere else.
Yeah, well, he's a day worker. He, he's here every Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. So it, it works out because the day working is around here. Like this fall, he's um, back at the sea punch because they do their fall works and spring works, so. He's in the fall works right now, so he'll be here and no, we, our plants are not.
Part of the reason I asked that is because throughout this COVID thing in the last year and a half or whatever, there's just been so much. And stability, you know.
Well, especially this year, I like, I've always. Um, this year with the stuff going on, like you'll hear me a lot say like. I prefer last year. Last year when we were all just cooped up in our houses away from everyone versus this year that we got out. And we all just kind of went crazy, you know, we, we're still kind of out there trying to figure out um, how to get on this routine again. But no, we're not, we're not going anywhere.
And then in the past, there's been um, once a month, Friday breakfasts at the senior center. And the public really wants that back. Plus, there's been special functions that have been developed like. The Christmas tree auction and the birdhouse thing and just different things and I'm sure that you would probably think of other things as well, but. The seniors and the community really enjoy those things, so I, I feel they're important.
Well, we did breakfast visit yesterday. We did breakfast yesterday and Larry um, Barb said today that a lot of the seniors. When Larry got there, they were just waking up so that they were, felt really good about just waking up and getting their breakfast. So it's been, we've been talking about it, like today we were talking about it in the kitchen that um, it would be nice to bring back the breakfast. And uh, when I was there in March, when I started, I saw Colby doing a lot of yoga work, workouts. With the seniors and at first they were kind of hesitant, but then when she started bringing prizes and stuff, they were like, okay. We kind of like this and you know, you all obviously.
Oh, listen, food and, and prizes.
So another thing we talked about is uh, you know, of course bringing back the breakfast, that's, that's a given, we're gonna do that. But in the past, they did not deliver to homebound on that day. That's going, now that they'll both have.
That's good. That's good because it's something that we all look forward to, you know, so that's.
Yeah, getting back in that.
Good job. So if you don't have any more questions of us, we're good, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So the next thing is selection of the senior center director and set this out.
Well, Giselda, she's, she's a unique individual and she's very personable. And um, we definitely need a senior center director as soon as possible. I know that um, Mr. Hudson doesn't want to lose her from the community center. But I think the senior center needs her too, so. Um, and she's the only applicant and not for that reason, but I mean, it's not like we're talking about two people. So I would recommend that we go ahead and hire her for the senior center position and then. If possible that she assist with the, you know, help us with the community center for a little bit.
She's, she won't have an issue.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, so that, some flexibility there.
I don't know, do you want to comment or not, Taylor?
So I'll make the motion that we select Giselda for the senior center director position. Anyway, that's the first part.
I will second that I would request that she continue to try and help out with the senior center or the community center until. A new coordinator.
As she's been doing, she's been doing half days anyway, so it, it's not an issue. Okay, we have motion and a second, all those in favor? At the eight hours, okay, good point.
When would she start that effective Monday? Uh, when is the next pay period or when is the easiest for payroll? Is that easiest for payroll? So I'm, then we need to talk about salary.
So I did a couple of numbers. She presently at the community center is paid sixteen dollars an hour, which is a twenty-six, seven. Uh, and according to this. What's that? Okay, I was just going by the minutes, that's all, that's all I was going by.
No, no.
No, 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 I was going by the minutes that we had this morning. That's what she was tired of.
But anyway, she's making sixteen now at community center. What are you recommending? And it doesn't have to be off of that.
And I know. So uh. So that, I mean, that's thirty-three, the last director was hired at thirty-three-five. I see no reason to change from that. Which is basically. Twenty-six, nine.
Cool, but how much is in an hour about, since you have that there?
The twenty, yeah, thirty-five, that's sixteen eighty-nine.
So it's another dollar, almost ninety-nine cents. So thirty-three, five, is that what you said?
That's thirty.
Or thirty-two?
Thirty-five, five.
Thirty-five, five?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, five, I thought. What was it, Karen?
I'm thinking it was thirty-three.
Yeah, I thought it was thirty-three going to thirty-five.
Which is sixteen dollars an hour. Well, we're not gonna go below it.
So a step eight is right in the middle at sixteen forty-eight.
Well, what we do is we pick an amount, so it's either, I don't remember if it was thirty-two, five that we hired the last one. So was, was it thirty-two, five? Okay, I would recommend thirty-two, five because.
Thirty-two, five is the decrease in pay.
It was thirty-three, five.
She's at thirty-three, four, if forty-five.
Okay, so thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty.
Is where she's at now.
All right, so I'll recommend that we hire her effective September thirteenth at thirty-three, five. Um, and after review, and I'm concerned about grants and administration and all that. That if she's up to speed on all those things and supervision, then we'll look at increasing her, but I'm not gonna say what dollar amount. So thirty-three, five for now, effective September thirteen. Yes, it's a motion.
I'll second.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
She has a lot of responsibility and um. Okay, that's it, right on that one. Okay, that's it, right on that one.
Hey, going back to our agenda, we have a bit before two o'clock. So we had a report from legal counsel, report from administrative assistant.
Um and we should start. We do have uh, we have to put down two uh. And uh the assistant BA is one of them and whoever got the senior center position was gonna be.
Okay, good.
So I do have to ready to take those classes. And then I have all the, and we didn't have a letter from Department of Ag. Um I do have all the, the question for a few more hire, hotel room rate for the NACO conference, depending on your experience.
I'm gonna drive back and forth, are you staying?
I'm still toying, could, because the two days before that, I'm in Tonopah.
So I'll.
So the one day I'll be, I'll be coming back from Tonopah and then going to the NACO, I may spend the night.
So I'll make a motion for, to approve the higher rate in case any of us need it.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. That it, Karen? I just put these in.
When we have our workshop, I would like to talk about other workshops when we are into that at two, you know, after we get through the other. But I think we've got some important issues that we need to sit down and really discuss how we're gonna handle them. The law enforcement center. You know, how we're gonna handle this, American recovery plans, just things like that. Better than that, I don't have anything other than what we've already talked about.
Have anything currently?
Any correspondence?
From Jennifer Watch and the. USBA APHIS does not have, currently have, will not be seeking funds for continued surveys and treatment of Mormon group.
So. I wanted to ask for more treatment, not.
Yeah, so now they're putting it on the counties in their twenty, twenty-two budgets, two budgets. The continuation of the treatments for each county.
That would we be responsible for doing it ourselves, I mean, hiring somebody?
I would, that we're gonna have to ask, I'm guessing that they want it in the, our budget to pay them to go out and uh do the treatments.
But they didn't say that or anything, okay.
So. Well, but that will be for the twenty twenty-three, yes, the next budget cycle.
Any other board member comment or anything?
Oh, I have commented, you wanna go first? Um Shayla participated in the intergovernmental executive committee for the naval expansion. And she, you were there in person, I believe, and I listened on the phone as the alternate, alternate. I, I was really impressed that you were able to accomplish anything, seriously, what a mess. And then um the hospital board, I attended that meeting, the healthcare foundation had their fundraiser, it was very successful. Um we had a lot of community support, I've already talked about the ARPA report. And the, what requirements we have to do, we really have to talk about that. Listen to the NACO meeting last Friday and Vince, the new director's doing a good job. And um anyway, that's about it, I think. Meetings and phone calls.
Hey, nah, I'm not even gonna, we had an airport advisory board meeting last week. Public input, public comments and discussion, or actually maybe taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item of one more tax will be taken. All the commentary will be limited to three minutes per person. Anybody on there, Zim? Hearing then vouchers is next, we're adjourned for, we're gonna have to adjourn for, we're just doing that.
Yeah.
It's two o'clock. This is a scheduled workshop with emergency services subcommittee review of the work submitted future workshops dates.
And so, so do you want to start out with the review of the committee? Sean on there?
Good afternoon, everyone. Sean Burke checking in.
Hi, Sean.
What do you look at this one? Sean's given. They basically kind of gave their report at the last commissioners meeting, right?
So is that the same as what we already received?
Yeah, basically, it was pretty much the same scenario that they went up before. We did talk to. So, funding for the service, evaluate charges. That's where we're having the problem at right now, the charges, revenue and other fiscal opportunities. Increasing revenue would require a dedicated full-time person. And I think that's where we definitely, that position definitely needs to be filled in. The sooner it's filled, the better. With the, with the discussion with Sharp's billing services identified areas of concern and possible ways to increase the revenue. Training Sharp and image trend software. The, we're not utilizing the software completely to what it, what it should be because we haven't never trained on it. We've had some training, but pretty much left it up to them to do the billing. Patient signatures, that's a big, big deal. You have to have that. When we were with Ramsa, they were under a little bit different deal back then where they didn't have to have a signature on every patient that got into the ambulance. And now to get that with, we're just not getting all that, all the signatures, you know?
Well, how do they require you to get a patient's signature if the patient's unconscious?
Then we can, we can say that due to a stroke or whatever, unable to sign, and then we can sign it and then witness. But see, that's another step and you're back there taking care of a patient and that. And then when we get over to the hospital, hand them off and along the way somewhere it doesn't get signed and then they call Marty and then she's got to round up the, the signature and stuff. So that's more time that she has to spend on those type of things, you know, where one of the, one of the solutions for that is we would put an iPad in there. That is locked to the inside of the vehicle or we could just put it over to him and he will pull it up, they sign it and we could just print that off and get back to the station. And also we could do our ambulance reports, start them and get that going right when they're in the ambulance, the EMT that's back there. So somebody's doing the scribe and somebody's taking care of the patient. Fees, increase the fees for service to competitive prices. That would make a big difference. We'll get more money coming in that way. Follow-up to maintain accurate documentation and billing for optional capture of revenue for the success of the department. Validate Medicare and Medicaid. We have not received payment from Medicaid since 2019. And complete contracts with commercial insurance companies. So we don't have any of those either. So that's something that you're, if you don't have anybody in, in there keeping, keeping up on this stuff and knowing what's going on and when things are coming, doing that, then those things gets, get bypassed. And then you go for a long time without being able to collect any of that money. We're out there doing the work, but we can't collect any money for it.
So isn't, isn't that what the EMS coordinator should be doing though? Should there be a tickler that says when things are?
I think that part of it, I think that whole billing process and that part of it, I think that's going to have to be a whole separate meeting with, and we'll have Sharp on the phone and stuff and come up. But that's not Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department or Persian County say ambulance crew to do. That's a county job. They get the, they get the notice that that's going away and, and they do that. We actually ran through that with Medicare a few years back. And we spent a whole, the fire department spent a whole bunch of time with Lacey and her crew. And I think we met with Bryce, we had to get a name changed and stuff like that. We went through that whole process and got that going. But then we never got a notification that Medicaid was gone. That comes to the county.
But then who does it go to?
I never saw anything.
Yeah, I mean, who, who does it go to?
It actually goes to your office is where it's supposed to go.
It goes to Karen. It goes, this is Marty. It goes to the county. That has nothing to do with the EMS coordinator. That county. Thing and the person that helped last time was Patty and Debbie as a favor for the county. So that we got the payments.
Yeah. No, and I know that. And Marty, I'm not pointing fingers at you. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I don't know what finger is pointed at me either.
Yeah, and but, so we don't know exactly where it goes to the county.
Sharp said that they were in contact with the county. So I, I've never heard of anything about the Medicaid lapsing. The Sharp, the insurance company themselves said that they were in contact with the county. So that's either, he said she's.
Marty, is there any way to find out who they're actually, or what office they're actually in contact with? Would they have a record of that?
Rodney was in on that meeting with Patty and I believe they know more of that information than I do.
Okay. All right. I'm just asking, so don't get.
So before I worked with Rodney.
So who signed off on?
I have no idea. That was the first time we had ever done that.
Right, I remember and it was quite a process.
Well, no matter, no matter who it's supposed to go to, this thing didn't happen. And the last time it happened, we had to go through Bryce and Lacey. We had to get the names. They have three different names on the license. We had to get all that changed. We got it all squared away. I think you guys, we didn't send it in, whether Ramsa sent it in or you guys sent it in. I don't know, but we didn't.
I went to Ramsa and I submitted it online.
Debbie Mock is sitting here with me and she said that she worked with Karen Westner.
And Bryce.
And Bryce to get it, to get Medicare going that time. But I mean, we weren't aware of the situation now at all as the ambulance service. We had no idea. And so we asked for a meeting with the billing company and they said that they have been, they reached out to the county because they needed to get the Medicaid reinstated. We have no idea. We don't know that as.
Marty, Marty, it's not a problem. It's okay. We'll go on. But I just was asking us a question.
It's just something we need to fix.
Correct.
Because we don't have it now and we're not collecting any money at all. So that's, and there's a lot of our calls are that.
Okay, and so continue on.
Ninety percent of our calls are that.
Yeah. Yeah, monitor and evaluate the accounts receivable, aging, you know, what's, what's out there on the books, which we got a ton out there on the books right now.
So Marty, do you get regular reports from Sharp? I'm just asking, don't get upset. Just, do they let you know what?
Carol, I'm working my full-time job and trying to zoom in. I do get a report once a week saying that they need signatures. And then, so once a month I go around on my lunch break and go get signatures. But once I go get the signatures, then some of them have already had their signatures. And so I have the report sitting here in front of me. That I print, that I have to go print off from Sharp and ninety-five percent of them are for a signature. And then some, I guess one right here in front of me says. Release of our signature, signature, these are all signature. This wants to know medical necessity. And yeah, mainly signatures.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so the, also the next thing would be training, training all the EMTs on what documentation requirements are, are to meet the medical necessity of ensuring billing can be accurately and optimal reimbursement. So pretty much you're going to have to have, that person should be a certified coder, bill course for ambulance. So they would, that person would be going through that so they can keep track of what the codes are on, what's being billed, follow up on what, what your billing company's doing. Certified medical necessity course. Change the Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department's policies, reduce the required number of EMTs per call to the state standard of two instead of, we use three. Allow for a driver only program and volunteer to be EMTs without being on the fire department. So they could just be on the ambulance service.
So are those things that the county should be doing to take care of or those?
That, that policy is actually a fire department policy. So that would be a policy that we would change. Personnel, monitor market conditions and ensure we can. Attract the best candidates for the EMT positions. Collections, policies and procedures. What are, what are the wishes of the commissioners regarding collection and self-paid portions of the accounts? How to handle write-offs of uncollectible accounts? Are you, who, do you guys use somebody to go after them for billing? We, we don't have any of that going on. So there's no follow-up on.
So once Sharp does whatever they can and then they don't send.
They don't have a, somebody that goes after them.
A collection service, okay.
Oh, if a dedicated, if a dedicated person monitors the reports.
So do that, but they did it on, with their people.
They did?
I think so.
No, not sure about that. But that has to be done because I, I mean, there's some of the stuff that they're going, they're sending, they have to send the check to the, to the patient. And the patient has to send it to us. Well, sometimes they don't send it to us. They keep the money.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if I was, I can tell you that more, the one, a person that actually had three calls and kept all of, all the bill, all the money, you know? So that was probably what, three thousand bucks now minimum? Okay, if a dedicated person monitors the reports, billing, coding and reimbursement, it may be possible to pay for the salary of two employees. And I think that would make a big difference now. And then we've got, you know, what a manager would be AMET and EMTs and casual call. And then we, we have the hundred dollars for a volunteer compensation if they do a call. If you, the other, your other, your other EMTs and your manager would be doing your shift during the day. And then you would have a fill-in with the, the volunteers at night. If you had more than one, you could have one at day and one at night. So you'd only be following up with one volunteer per call. So you're looking at, like we, like we put in the budget, three hundred and sixty-four thousand for the. For six of them. Two of them was one forty, forty-six. And then the hundred, you know, the. Four hundred runs a year of forty thousand. One would be just your ninety-five and then your volunteers would be eighty thousand. I mean, you're going to have to almost ensure that there's going to be somebody there. So it's either going to have to pay on call or you're going to have to him, try to pay him per call and, you know. If that doesn't work, the, I would say the pay them on call part would be the best thing to do.
Well, and I would say don't pay them until they do the paperwork.
Yeah. Well, if you have somebody there, you're going to, that person's going to make sure that paperwork's done every day, you know? That's going to be part of their job to follow up. That's what the problem is now.
But it says here that a manager, which would be doing what responsibly for the. They would have. Billing, coding and reimbursement?
They'd have to be an EMT. They'd have to go on the calls. They'd be, they'd have to do a shift. And on that shift, they would, they would monitor all the billing and stuff. Make, and do all the stuff that they're doing right now. They're going to have to take care of, make sure everybody's certified, make sure there's training. Just all the stuff that goes along with the MS stuff right now, you know, ordering supplies. I mean, it's a full-time job. That's even a big job and be an EMT also.
But would that bring in enough money to, through the ambulance to pay for this individual?
I believe it would. I mean, and if it didn't, you might have to supplement it, you know?
The problem is, is we don't have the revenue to supplement it. And we don't have the, we can't raise taxes.
No.
This is where we're at. So there were, whoever, we have to bring in enough revenue on that by the ambulance, through the ambulance to pay for this.
You're going to have to make a decision, what do you want to do for at least one year to see if it's going to work? If you decide after a year, you're going to go back to the old original. I guess that's what you could do. Or maybe you can find some other funding, like some of the grants or something like that. But we're never going to get anywhere if we don't get started. You need somebody that's on top of what's going on down there more than what's going on right now. Because there is not enough time in the day to work a full job. Do that, be an EMT and a firefighter and do all that stuff at the same time. And it's just like, I was here when you guys were talking about the, the money that you've got coming in, the COVID money. It's got, the insurance companies, healthcare, it's got so many things that are put on us right now. But just to keep up with that stuff is just, it, it's going to take a full-time person to keep all that up. I, I don't know a county right now that has the fire departments and takes care of the ambulance that doesn't have paid people because that's how serious it is. You can pick, pick Hawthorne if you want. Give them a call and talk to the gal that's in charge down there. They're running into about the same system we're running into right now. They have a gal that just, she's an EMT or an advance. She does all the, all this stuff, takes care of the, and they do Sharps and they make. They're really, they like Sharps, the same with Dealey. They like them. But you got to give them the information so they can do the building, so they could collect it. And, you know, asking the volunteers to do all that, it's just not right.
Well, and you've got the manager's salary, that's pretty high, sixty-five.
But I mean, that's, you can adjust that. That's, you're going to have to have a job description and you're going to have to set wages. But you have to make a decision that, I mean, we can't keep going on as a committee after committee and saying, if you're going to just say, we don't have the money and we're not going to do it, then that's going to be it, I guess. You know, but we've been talking about this for a year. We've had all these committees staff, we're meeting and doing all this stuff, but we have not made a decision. But even in what direction we're going to go, are we going to have one person? Are we going to have two people? Are we going to have six? We're. You know, find out how much money it's going to cost you and then try to figure out where you're going to get the money.
So you have down a certified coder or slash biller?
Would be good.
But.
Does Marty know how to do that? I know she's interested in the position. Does she know how to do that?
She works for the hospital as a biller.
She does that stuff. And you would take some classes too. That person would have to be just like, like any of your other managers and any of your healthcare, they'd take classes to learn that.
I'm not a certified coder, but we did look into the course to become.
Eventually you might be able to get off to doing the billing yourself, the whole thing.
We, we did that before though, and that didn't work out so well. There's been a lot of different things tried.
I mean, that's kind of, you got to remember, Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department in two more years is going to be a hundred years old. We've been providing service to this community for ninety-some years and we have done it on all volunteers.
So item number three, that's something that you as a volunteer fire department can do now, correct? Reduce the number of EMTs per call to two and allow the driver only program and also to.
Oh yeah, we could, that would be our policy.
Separate the ambulance from. Separate the ambulance from.
Basically, you would give them their choice. And then we could probably pick up more people that don't wanna fight fire just on the.
So how soon can you do that? That's a good solution right there.
We could.
I'm not saying it's the whole thing, I'm just saying.
Whether it's a, whether it's a policy right now, or if it's in the bylaws, if it's in the bylaws, it takes thirty days. We have to do a letter, notify all the members, and then they have to vote on it, which I I don't think will be a problem.
Okay, so that's something you can work on now and and implement within thirty days or so, right?
Oh yeah.
And there's no reason not to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that helps with that. Okay.
So how many EMTs do we have?
Right now, we have um twenty-one members right now and we have four.
Eighteen.
Eighteen EMTs?
And we have some advanced too.
Okay.
Well, that's with everybody, we have eighteen active.
How many?
We only have four advanced.
Of that eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You have Rich Wagner, Rodney Wilcox, James, who is not a full-time with us all the time. I guess you only have, and Polly, so you have four.
Okay. All right, so you've got quite a crew if that's all they had to worry about.
Well, you're not gonna get all of those people to, if we, if we give them a chance. Some of those are gonna decide that they don't wanna do.
Well, and we need to know.
Yeah.
How many are left?
Yes.
Okay. And if we provide an incentive for them to go on a call, they might decide to stay.
Oh yeah.
Okay, and if they're they're paid the stipend directly, like we do with the transport. You know, we transport out of county.
To Reno, yeah.
We we pay that directly, okay.
I think that would be huge with, well, what, who and who we have right now, a stipend would be huge. And it'd be a more incentive for people to be able to go.
So you had about four hundred calls last year, if I remember that documentation? So, and if you had two people on the ambulance, right?
Three.
The driver and then two, is that correct? Okay, bear with me, I'm not on, you know, and I haven't needed the services, thank goodness. So would you, if you changed the policy, you would have a driver and one EMS?
Hmm, no.
No.
Yeah, I mean, if we were going to to Reno or something like that, you could use a driver and EMS, but you're gonna, you have to have two EMTs.
If we were down to two on the ambulance, we would want both EMTs in case you're doing CPR or in case you're doing something that. Just a driver can't do.
Well, according to this, with the change in policies, I'm just reading that, you would um, the state standard is two EMT.
Yeah.
And then you would have a a driver only in in addition, because you need two people back there with the patient.
No.
So what could one be driving and one be, so so when you change it to two. Then you'd have one, whether it's an EMT or just a driver, driving.
That's the beginning.
Okay, so two EMTs. And if you had a driver only, you'd have one with the two. Got it, okay. Thank you. It's been a long day, thank you.
The the driver, the only drug, driver only thing, the driver only thing is, right now, it it puts us on a line. Because we could still run, we run with three people, so we can have a driver with two EMTs, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if we go to two, that driver is not gonna be able to be used in that scenario with just two people.
Yeah, two EMTs, got it.
You gotta have two EMTs. But the driver is a way to get some of these guys that are just working on their EMT. Right now, so they can interact and be be out there and see what's going on.
Okay, so those are policy changes you can implement within thirty days or so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carol?
Realistically, it'll take probably sixty days.
Yeah, but but you can start on it right away, get it done, and then we can find out how many people we actually. Probably talk to them now and find out how many want to do what. Okay. And I realize you need to know that too, but okay.
Carol? This is Patty, can you hear me?
Yes, Patty.
Those were put in there just just as um suggestions. When, after we spoke with the lady who runs the program in Mineral County. She develops a driver-only program to help with transfers.
As far as Reno runs?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the driver only would really be just transfers, correct?
Yeah.
So you, but then would you have to have two EMTs in the back?
For a transfer?
For a transfer. Okay, so transfers would be one driver, one EMT.
Yeah.
Okay.
And realistically, most of the drivers, if there's a call, most of them, one will show up. It's it's.
Okay.
But I mean, if we could at least get it going, then we could, yeah, you know, like Mike said earlier, the one of the funding. Could be a uh a no-match type thing or presenting dog, right, Mike? Uh, one of the grants that you were talking about, sort of the like ninety percent, eighty, whatever.
The safer.
The safer grant.
So. If I speak, I'll not even worry, but but I think it needs to be on the table. So yes, the safer grant is something that is. I mean, probably first of October. For last. Notification of funding opportunity, there was a zero match for three years. And you had to do with COVID and the situation across the country. Prior to that, there was that ninety, ten, eighty, twenty, seventy. It's the opinions, people that I've talked to, but he said, probably the no-foil will come out again with a match, which is good news. Bottom of the, for this particular piece, is this is an assistance to firefighter. So they have to be firefighter EMTs. Strictly, EMTs and ambulance services for an eligible fire department. According to the notice, I think, came out. And I believe you're, I sent that to you last.
Yeah, you did it March, March, I think.
So. So you just say. There's gonna be some some steps. Which is gonna be compliant with the NCA seventeen twenty, which is reasonably used. Firefighter, EMTs. To hire them.
Well, aren't most of our volunteers firefighter EMTs current currently?
But if we split it, then we wouldn't.
And and yes, but because they have a label firefighter, we've gotta get that firefighter one. Because it doesn't call that, we gotta have that documentation to pick up the firefighter.
Because we already approved you applying, applying for the safer grant.
No.
Yeah.
We we talked about, we wanted to talk about what we were doing first. And the notice is not.
They approve the concept, but the notice isn't out, so we don't have anything to prove. Their business plan is not just, it costs this amount of money, we've gotta say. We have twenty-four seven coverage and this is how it's gonna look, we're gonna have. Our twenty-four hour people work ten hours in the firehouse and then respond to the residence or house in twenty-four, whatever it is, it is. But we've gotta have all of those particular narratives, how it's gonna work, and then documentation to back that up.
And does that have to be an effect before it goes in, Mike, or is it, if it goes in then?
It has to be effective, it has to be in place during the. Performance period of the grant. So let's say, let's say it comes out in October, the no-foil apply. Probably would be due first part of February. Then there's that three-month, there's still vetting period, so it's really in May or June or four, then it would have to be in place by then.
Yeah.
So you're looking right now, nine, ten months down the road. For safer's part of the policy. On fix now to me, annoying, because I was part of setting up. And the driver, which we actually started easily, so we can use end up as. Is obviously billing is an issue, but there is something. There is county uh budget, this is the question, county budget goes to the ambulance already, correct?
Correct.
So I guess for me, the simple, simple dumb firefighter brain is, we gotta figure out what this five-gallon bucket of money looks like. And say we can fill a couple gallons out of billing and maybe a couple gallons out of budget we already have, and where's our shortfall and how do we fix that? But knowing what these guys are going through, it's something that sooner rather than later, at least get moving forward. What you already know you have and not rely on a grant, that might be a good.
So was there a comparison done on the ambulance rates from surrounding or similar counties?
I think Sean, did you do that, the rates, when you did, when you gave your presentation of all the, what's, what all the different counties were banned for everybody?
Uh, we did a general overview comparison. Um, we'd have to go back and probably find the exact numbers of what their. What their base rate and their uh miles, loaded miles uh are getting charged at. I don't, I don't have that readily at hand.
Yeah.
That's okay, Sean, but if we could get that information, I think one of the first things we need to do is look at the rate. And look at what it needs to be raised to.
Are we close to what Battle Mountain is, Sean, or do you know that all then?
Yeah, you were lower than uh than Lander County.
There you go, so we're lower.
We haven't changed the rate, it's been at least five or more years, because I was on the board when we did it, but it was a long time ago. I just don't remember when, and it hadn't been changed then for a long time.
So with with all those changes, it's I, and I think Sean agrees that with all those changes, we should be able to fund it out of our. Billing if everything went right, right, Sean? Or what's your thought?
Yeah, I mean, just uh based on the numbers um that we've seen, you know, from uh from twenty nineteen. From when Remza was doing your billing to what you have now, if you could, if you could regain that ground. Um, that would easily um fund, I I'm not sure what you're proposing for a, for a uh salary for a full-time person. To coordinate that, but um, you know, if you're, you know, I think you you're talking, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars. Um, that you're not getting right now, that ought to, you know, if you can get that back, uh you ought to be able to easily pay for that salary.
But then we're no further ahead than where we are right now.
Well, the way we would be.
The what, yeah, but.
That would give us a break.
It would give you a break, but I mean financially.
They would be bringing in some revenue.
Yeah, it's, it's that the time has come for somebody to be a full-time person overseas. Because there's so many things that we're missing out on, trying to do it part-time, that this person would have the ability to be in the. Around the state, keep an eye on.
So where would this person be housed? No, I I'm asking for where the recommendation is.
Well, they'd have to be at the fire.
That's what I'm saying, they have to be at the fire.
But then who's gonna supervise that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as billing and everything else?
I know, you have to, like, watch them like that, I figured, we would all know pretty instantly they're doing their job or not.
What, whether we're getting payments.
Okay, so who, who is over your managers now? In the county. You have a manager for each department, who's over them?
The commissioner.
But. Carol, Carol, or any Larry?
Yes, Sean.
Hey, so you know, to answer that question specifically, I can, I can tell you how it works. Um, where I am employed now is a full-time EMS coordinator, so I'm independent. And I report out, you know, once a month, the budget gets looked at by my boss. Um, and then that's when they know whether I was, you know, working hard or goofing off. Um, and and I think that's, you know, I I think you're looking, you're not, you're not looking to hire somebody that you need, that you need to keep your thumb on. You're looking to hire someone who is going to manage and lead uh the EMS service. And and their report card, their report card is is in their financials and, you know, and their training. And their membership and all those other things that, you know, ought to be reported out on, on a periodic basis in any event.
Sean, are you an employee of Lander County or are you on contract?
I am an employee of the hospital. Uh, our arrangement here is the uh, the hospital. Um, owns all the people uh that staff the service and the uh, all the equipment is owned by the county. It's a somewhat unique arrangement. Uh, if you look in Humboldt County, the hospital owns both the equipment and. And uh pays the people, so it so it kind of depends on how you structure the legal agreement. Um, but you know, for an employee of the uh, you know, of of the county, um, they would obviously report to you.
I know in Hawthorne, they are, they work off of a county budget. The fire department has theirs and the EMS has theirs, and then they work together.
Sean, do you go on fire calls?
We do uh respond to fire calls uh as a standby um. In Lander County, uh but we are not part of the fire department, we have no affiliation with the fire department whatsoever. Other than we, you know, both working towards the same public safety goals. Uh, so yeah, we do, we do respond to fires uh with the ambulance primarily to do rehabilitation or just, you know, safety standby. In case there's uh some injuries.
Okay, thank you.
So Sean, can you get us? Numbers for like for Lander County, what they are charging, is that proprietary?
No, it's not, and uh many of those numbers are included in the uh report. There's a table, it may be tab two or something like that. I don't have it in front of me, but uh many of those numbers are included in there. And if, and if that isn't sufficient information, we can definitely get what Lander's doing.
I don't remember seeing, I don't remember seeing it, Sean, but that doesn't mean.
Is there a table in there that kind of compares the different services?
There's a table, but what that has in it, um, if it's the white one I'm looking at, it's got Love Lock, Grass Valley, Emily, Red Patch. Humboldt, Lander, Ely and Eureka, but what I see is staffing, the level, the service area, the size, stations. Response, call volume, and then there's the pay.
But it does not say what the charge is.
For the ambulance call.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we, I can get you that information.
So I think that we need to crunch some numbers.
I think the big thing is at least you have some numbers, you know what your goal is that you need to find, you know, and.
Yeah.
We need the numbers to know where we're gonna.
I'm just thinking if we, I'm just throwing a number out here, okay, I'm not. But if we paid a hundred dollar stipend to the EMTs when they respond. And there were two EMTs. That's two hundred dollars a call. And um, and then we have whoever is taking over, doing the billing, whether it's a manager or a billing person or whatever. But I think we need to look at those ambulance rates because just it raising those might easily cover.
Right.
That.
Yes.
Stipend and a one. May, maybe, maybe, not, I wouldn't cover all of the full-time position.
Sean, do you know a ballparking number on what Lander County ambulance fee is?
Um, I wanna say we are, so it it depends on if you're a BLS or ALS response uh or ILS response. So I wanna say for a BLS response, I think we're at fifteen hundred dollars uh base and then thirty-three dollars per loaded mile. And so obviously, the um, you know, the inter facility transfers are where you make all your money. Because the the loaded miles add up very quickly when you're taking someone to Reno, so those, those are, those are very lucrative. Um, but but I would, I would suggest that, you know, then certainly the rate should be looked at and should be competitive. Um, but just raising rates doesn't always help because. Um, but just raising rates doesn't always help because the, you know, insurance companies and they all, they all benchmark their payment standards off of what Medicare pays. So the federal program. And so even, you know, if you charge like, you know, if the thought was, well, we'll just charge you, you know, like five thousand dollars per, per base. Um, you know, they're still only going to pay you at what the, at what their standard rate is. Uh, and I, you know, so that, that's one thing to consider. It, you, you can't raise it an unlimited amount because you, you won't get paid for it. Um, the second thing I would tell you is the, the place where you're really going to make your gains is, is in the percentage you collect versus the amount you've billed. So that's the perpetual struggle. Um, currently you really only get paid if you transport a patient. There, there's some limited opportunities to charge people for treatments done in their home. So say I come to your house and, uh, you're having a hard time breathing and we give you a nebulizer treatment. There, there's an opportunity to charge for that, but it's pretty minimal. The real money to be made in ambulance services is made by transporting patients. And, uh, so, um, most organizations, that's about fifty percent of their total call volume. So, so straight out of the bat, um, about half of the calls you run, you're not going to get paid for at all. Uh, out of that other fifty percent that you are going to get some pay for, uh, you really have to have someone who is aggressively uh, doing the paperwork and doing the follow-up to make sure that you're actually getting paid. So Rob threw out an interesting scenario where some unscrupulous insurance companies send the check uh, to the person who, you know, to the patient and let them decide whether or not to pay the bill. They, they shouldn't be doing that. They should be paying the ambulance provider. Um, that's the way it's, you know, that's the way ideally would work. But, um, there are many, many, many circumstances out there where, um, you know, insurance companies are incentivized not to pay unless they kind of get called on it. And so if you send out a bill, um, I would guess that about seventy-five percent of the time, the initial answer is always, well, we're going to pay you nothing or we're going to hear, here's five bucks. Um, you have to, you know, you have to be working like hand in glove with your billing company to go back to those people, back to those insurance companies, back to Medicare, back to Medicaid, back to private payers and following up with them and say, hey, uh, five dollars is not right. That's not sufficient. You, you, you owe us, you know, more money than that. And if you don't do that, um, you're, you're not going to make the money you should. And that's where, where the real gains are made. So, you know, increasing rates and stuff to a comparable level with other services is good and should be done. But the real crux of fixing this problem lies in that person who can dedicate um, hours and hours every day to working with their billing company to make sure the paperwork's right, to make sure that the follow-up is happening. Um, that, that's just based on my experience having done it in two services.
So Sean, in Lander County where you are, you're under the hospital. So does the hospital then, I'm guessing, take care of the Medicare and the Medicaid and those contracts with the commercial insurance companies like they do for themselves?
They, they do.
So if actually you're working under the hospital's program for the billing.
Yeah, and here the hospital, yeah, and here the hospital, their billing department does billing for EMS currently. Uh, you know, I'll be perfectly frank with you. Um, I, I'm not sure how well that's going. Um, my, I am, I am looking at, uh, trying to get a, a commercial company to do it. One that's more incentivized to, uh, to, to do that aggressive follow-up. Um, that, you know, in, in a small town, small hospital billing department, we're having some difficulties with that here, but that, that is currently the range. The hospital is our coder and our biller and our, you know, they, I think they, they have a separate collections agency that they employ to, to do, you know, the follow-up on people who refuse to pay, but, um, but we are under the hospital.
So if you went to a, a, an independent biller, whose Medicare and Medicaid numbers would you be working under? Still the hospitals?
Yes, because, um, yeah, so we're, we're still, you know, we, we are a department of the hospital. So the billing agency is just merely acting on our behalf. And then that's basically the way it would work for, for the county as well. Um, you know, once that's set up, the billing company is, is just basically the, the operative agent that, that's affecting, you know, those payments.
So I wonder if Pershing General Hospital would be willing.
Conversation.
I think so too, but we willing that we would be under their Medicare and Medicaid numbers. Cause it was a long time ago.
Carol, this is Debbie Mock.
Hi Debbie, go ahead.
The hospital will, cannot afford even put it under contract. For Medicare's regulations, we would have to have our own MPI numbers, our own billing numbers and everything else to do that. There is no way it is an easy fix like that. There is regs that we have to go through through CMS because we're a critical access hospital to do billing for an ambulance. It's not an easy fix.
All right. I was just trying for an easy fix. Thanks Debbie. Okay.
Well, and Carol, we brought that up with the CEO at the hospital there and, uh, and, uh, and we pretty much heard what we just heard from Debbie is that that was not a doable thing, uh, from their perspective. So, so that, 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 uh, that, um, that's already been hashed over, um, at least once.
So whoever we would hire to do the billing would have to take care of whatever's necessary with the Medicare and Medicaid and, and those contracts with the commercial insurance companies?
And collections.
And collections.
Well, I think your billing company will work with part of that.
I hope so.
If they have the permission to, to do that. I bet, I'm not positive without, without asking this question. That's just.
Does Marty know?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm not clear on what the issue is with Medicare and Medicaid. That's just, those are payer sources that have different rules and regulations that, you know, you have to, you have to meet their standards. Are you, are you referring to some other aspect that, that is of concern?
No, my, my concern is more than likely these two things have expired or we haven't followed up on the paperwork that we need to keep them going.
You have to reapply.
Yeah, if you reapply or whatever, or renew or how, whatever the terminology is. And so whoever, if we were to hire a billing person, they would have to keep up on this and make sure that we're, we're meeting the deadlines. Not just for the billing, but also for the, whatever paperwork Medicare and Medicaid require.
Yeah.
And I know it's not an easy process because when Lacy was helping with it, it was a, a mess.
Yeah.
We got one straightened out. The other one that went laps right out for.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Medicaid is the more difficult of the two. Um, and I was, I was not surprised to hear that you'd received no Medicaid payments. Um, in, you know, and, and just so everybody knows kind of where, where that stands. Um, you look, you're looking to get about six cents on the dollar charged, uh, back from Medicaid. That's how badly they pay.
Um, how many iPads do you need?
How many do we need?
And how much about did that cost?
Jesse, how much are they?
How many do we need for the ambulances, which one?
Yeah, if they had to buy, buy what would be, we, we would probably only need two, two.
But then whoever's doing the billing might need one too, or something, or just.
Well, you would just, that's what down load is to the.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have three. We have two there active at all times. You're going to want four. You're going to want an iPad when you're active. Once you're back.
We currently have some though.
We have two.
On top of what we need, you need two. We have three.
So what do iPads cost?
Seven, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, they also need to be Verizon. As we do our work on the fly.
I could, I could probably reach out to our Verizon.
Sure.
Okay. So I think what we need to do is crunch some numbers here.
Yeah, if we had some more, uh, comparison numbers, it'd be great.
Would, what kind of comparison do you want?
The rates.
Costs.
The rates for surrounding counties.
So we see where we're at and where we can go.
Like Mineral County, Lander County.
I would. As far as you guys, I would make your own full calls, call Mineral County, call Ely, call some of the other ones and find out how they run their operations, you know? We've, we've done it. And we've kind of tried to explain it and Sean put some of it in there, but if you hear it from them, maybe it will be a little easier for you. And they're always happy to talk to. I talked to Hawthorne two days ago and the lady that runs our EMS service. And they're in the middle of, uh, what they're doing right now. They're doing with, uh, two firefighters and hers and he, you know, they're all the EMTs and she's the, the manager of the ambulance side of it. And, uh, they work for, she works for ten and, you know, the firemen, they work their regular shifts of forty-eight or whatever it is. And then they supplement up with ten volunteers, but they're getting to the point now and they, they give their volunteer on a call, if they come in on, if they come in on a call and go with them, they give them twenty bucks. So if they make four calls in that day, it's eighty bucks. So, but they're not guaranteed, you're not guaranteed those ten people, you maybe might not get one, you know, out of all ten of them. So they're thinking the same thought of going on, on, on call and then just paying so much an hour for twenty-four hours on call and it comes down to about eighty bucks or something like that. So for on-call for twenty-four hours, they get eighty bucks. They don't have any calls, they get eighty bucks if they go on a call. They, you know, they get eighty bucks. So.
So.
That's just one person. Ely does a hundred bucks, so.
Yeah, so I'll volunteer to call the other local EMS people and, and get some information and work with Rain on some numbers. And I can get ambulance rates. And I'll volunteer to do that if the board wants me to.
So Carol.
Yes, sir.
So for Lander County, Battle Mountain General Hospital, for a, a BLS emergency transport, our base rate is one thousand thirty-five dollars and thirty cents. So if we come to your house and put you in the back of the ambulance, that's a thousand thirty-five. And then we charge, um, let's see, thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents for a loaded mile. And then we charge four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents for, uh, for an ambulance treatment without transport.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you the spreadsheet. There's a, it's, it's broken down a lot further than that because we're an ALS service and can do, um, specialty care and all this other stuff. It's a lot more pricey, but I think those three are the ones that are, um, the most genuine to what Love Lock would be providing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is that okay with you Larry?
Yes.
Right. So I will do that. So when we have another workshop set up. I thought there was a date on here. I gotta look. Yeah, September twentieth, we said.
And then you can kind of look through your monies and see where you might deal with.
Yeah, at nine o'clock. So we have that.
I was kind of hoping that we might be able to use some of that marijuana money.
The marijuana money, actually we get about eighty-eight thousand. Right now it's going into the capital improvements for law enforcement and, but we're going to have to start doing an accounting to probably the state of exactly where that money goes. Um, but it wouldn't be fire and ambulance. It has to be law enforcement.
Once it went in there, it has to be there. Once it went into the building fund, it has to be there.
No, wherever it goes, it has to be for law enforcement, whether it goes in the building fund or directly.
Oh, you mean that money is only for law enforcement, not for emergency services?
That's my understanding. I'll double.
That might be something to check on.
Yeah.
Because I think you could use it for emergency services.
And, and maybe, I don't know.
So it's kind of like, maybe you can, uh, wrangle up some of that money.
I think you have to find the sheriff.
I know. He's a lot bigger than us too. But there's a lot of us and there's only one of him. And we know where he's at.
I appreciate everybody's work on all of this. I know it's.
I'm just really concerned that we went so long now and we talked about this. We put it in the budget and we took it out of the budget. And then we keep having a meeting after meeting and we just, nobody's even made a decision if we're going to do it or not. And I'm understanding that we're going to do something by next meeting maybe and, you know.
Well, it's not in the budget for this year, so.
So you're talking about.
Figure out how to do something, yes.
I mean, this is not going to go a whole nother year till.
No, we're going to figure out how to do something.
I don't think we can. Right, I'm telling, we need to do something.
Who sets, who sets the ambulance fees in those other counties you were referencing?
How much were the ambulance fees?
Who sets the ambulance?
The commissioners do. I'm almost sure they do.
Or if it's run by the hospital.
Well, they have to approve it. Yeah.
Well, you're.
Um, Carol, you were in on the last one.
Yeah, the commission that does it.
Yeah, commissioner.
But in every single county that you reference, you're telling me the board county commissioners.
No. At the hospital probably sets them because they are the ambulance service. But the county, Pershing County is the ambulance service for Pershing County. Love Lock calling your fire department just doesn't.
Yeah.
We are, we're not, we are Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department. And we do Pershing County and Love Lock. So there's kind of a, think about that. And that's where Mike's going, Mike's, you know, that's where he's going with the thing with the district.
I had a conversation with the DA about that.
I mean, it's kind of a double-edged sword thing. It's just like the ambulance service had three different names on the, on the permit or whatever it was and we had to get that all straight down before we could get that going. And then all of a sudden, here we are. It can't, the next one cancels and nobody knew about it or nobody picked it up. And we went almost two years without collecting any of that money. And we're not collecting any still.
Yeah.
So who are we putting in charge of taking care of that?
That's why I said, who are they contacting? But anyway.
Yeah, so I, I, it's in the county's ballpark on the Medicaid thing. I would think that, that the license is in Pershing County's name and they should be responsible for their, um, getting it renewed and, and keeping track of it. Now, we, we keep track of our ambulance attendance licenses and stuff. We do that, but so we got to have some rules. Somebody needs to tell us who's in charge of what, you know? There's got to be some job descriptions. There's got to be, you know, a lot of stuff.
Currently, it's a volunteer department.
Yeah, but you still got, what do you want us to do?
We're not going to answer that right now. So thank you for everything you do do.
Yeah.
And please continue doing that, especially if I need your services.
I mean, we're not going to, it's not to that point yet, but we're, it's one of those things that we've been doing it for.
Yes, okay.
Seventy, eighty years, you know?
Well, I'll do my best to have all the information together for the, before the next meeting so that it can be distributed to my fellow commissioners.
We probably should have been on this probably ten, fifteen years ago. It probably might have been easier. There's so much, healthcare's changed so much right now. It's changing so fast that it's like, you have to have somebody that's keeping up.
Everything is changing the best. It's not just that.
The more requirements they put on the volunteers is just crazy. A lot of hours. All right, thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Are we concluded? Is the meeting over?
We're close. He hasn't adjourned us, but everybody's leaving.
Have a good day then.
Thank you. We had said September twentieth.
Yes, but we didn't set a time that I.
Oh, we had nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
How many o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
I like that. How many o'clock?
Yeah, today's the.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, yeah, all right.